I would like to call the Board of Selectmen meeting for Tuesday evening, December 22, 2020, to order. This meeting is being held remotely as an alternate means of public access pursuant to an order issued by the Governor of Massachusetts dated March 12, 2020, suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law. You are hereby advised that this meeting and all communications during this meeting may be recorded by the Town of Hingham in accordance with the open meeting law. If any participant wishes to record this meeting, please notify the Chair at the start of the meeting in accordance with Mass. General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 20F, so that the Chair may inform all other participants of said recording. If anyone is recording this meeting, may I ask you to please identify yourself either by using the raise hand function or by unmuting and announcing that you are recording?
Okay, seeing none, we have, just to start, we have approval of three sets of minutes, November 19, November 25, and December 3. I'd be prepared to accept motions for any of those minutes, or if anyone would like to defer any of the minutes, happy to do that as well.
I'm prepared to move on, all three.
Okay, I'd accept motions.
I'd make a motion to approve the minutes dated November 19, 2020.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, Joe?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
Joe, you want to do the 25th?
I'll move to approve the minutes dated November 25, 2020.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, Joe?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
I'd make a motion to approve the minutes dated December 3, 2020.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, Joe?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
Thank you. The next item of business, and this is really exciting. This is actually the FY21 CPC grant agreement for the Benjamin Lincoln House. And I would like to welcome members of the Hingham Historical Society. I see Deirdre Anderson, I see Paula Bagger, Dorothy Gallo, Jim Taylor. I see Larry Linder, the Chair of the Community Preservation Committee. I apologize if I've missed anybody, but the purpose tonight is actually to take some votes that will allow the Historical Society to close on this property by year end. And really, this is a procedural vote for all of us to carry out the wishes of Town Meeting. I'm going to start by recognizing Real Estate Council for the Town, Susan Murphy, to just give an overview of kind of what's taking place right now. I'll then open it up to questions from my colleagues. If any members of the Historical Society have questions or comments, as well as the Chair of the Community Preservation Committee. And I just want to start by thanking in particular Susan Murphy and Paula Bagger. You know, with these documents, it's a lot of detail, it's a lot of very important things. And both of these women have dedicated many, many hours, particularly over the last week, to bring this to fruition. And we are so appreciative of that effort, and we would not be here tonight if it weren't for both of you. So, thank you. Susan, perhaps if you could just give the Board and the audience an overview of the business before us tonight?
Sure, thank you, Mary. So, as Mary's already presented, the documents that come before the Board of Selectmen tonight are in connection with Article 19 of the 2020 Annual Town Meeting, which occurred back in June. Pursuant to that article, Town Meeting voted to approve a grant in the amount of $772,000 from Community Preservation Act funds of the Town to the Hingham Historical Society toward the purchase of the Benjamin Lincoln home and property that the home sits on. Based on the documents that we've received from the Historical Society, the full purchase price is $972,000, so this is approximately 79.4% of the purchase price. The Town Meeting vote did require that it would be subject to a grant agreement between the Board of Selectmen, the Community Preservation Committee, and the Hingham Historical Society. And the comment to the voters at Town Meeting also noted that there would be, in the unlikely event that the Historical Society were ever to sell the property, that the Town would have a right of first refusal or the option to return of its contribution towards the purchase of the property. So, we understand from the Society, and based on all the other properties they've owned in Town, that that's probably unlikely to happen, but it was in the best interest of protecting the investment by the Town of these taxpayer dollars. There's also a commitment by the Historical Society to have the property made available for public access. Maybe I'll let, they can speak to that if anyone has any questions, but I might equate it to the Old Ordinary or something similar to that. They were required to get zoning permits in order to allow the single-family house to become a museum or a public building. They have received the necessary planning board and zoning board permits. That has already taken place. After they purchase it, there's a requirement that they meet the necessary state accessibility requirements in order for it to have public access. So, that is also a requirement. So, what you have before you are the three documents. The first one is the grant agreement, which is the operative document referenced in the Town Meeting vote. The grant agreement states the conditions on which the Town is awarding the $772,000. It includes all of the conditions that I just mentioned that were discussed in the warrant comment and also on the field of Town Meeting, I should say. And in addition to some other general conditions that the Town includes in all of its grant agreements, that there be a sign somewhere appropriate on the property indicating that there was a contribution of Community Preservation Act funds to assist with the purchase, as well as the condition that they report to the CPA on a quarterly basis until all of the initial conditions are met, including the, you know, accessibility requirements, et cetera. So, that is the first agreement. That agreement kind of fades away as soon as all of the initial conditions are met. And then, what is also required is the, an agreement for historic preservation, which is a requirement actually of the Community Preservation Act, that any time funds go to the purchase of a real property, that it's required that there be historic preservation restriction. There is a form, it's not quite a template, but close, that the Massachusetts Historical Commission expects that communities to use for these types of restrictions. So, we have started with a form that Mass. Historical provided to Andrea Young in the Historical Department, and we have tailored it to this property. It's important to note that there is an organization known as Historic New England, which has held a historic preservation restriction on this property for a number of years. That restriction is very intensive. It protects both the exterior of the property, to some degree, the appearance of the lot itself, what can happen on the lot, but also the interior of the building, which is very unusual. So, this home is already protected, right down to the moldings in the living room. I mean, every cornice, I can't imagine, is protected from change under this restriction. And so, the Historical Society is going to be very, you know, which is what their intention anyway, but will be very closely monitored by Historic New England. So, the discussions around the Town's restriction, which the Town's required to hold on the Community Preservation Act, is to have it be a backstop to the Historic New England restriction, so that in the event, for some, you know, reason that we can't think of today in 2020, the Historic New England preservation restriction were to no longer be in force in effect, then the Town is in place to kind of pick that up and would protect the exterior appearance of the home and, you know, what might go on on the lot. No additions, any additions on the house, trying to put other buildings on that, anything like that, would be subject to review by the Hingham Historical Commission. So, that is the second document. And the last document is the one that protects the taxpayers' kind of funding of this project. And that has a fairly lengthy name, because there's a lot going on in that agreement, and that is the Right of First Refusal, Reimbursement Agreement, and Use Restriction. And that document provides primarily for two protections for the Town. The first one is that it requires that the property be used for the required use. And the required use, as we've defined it, is as a museum with reasonable accommodations for public access to the property at a reasonable cost to residents of the Town, subject to such restrictions and regulations as the Hingham Historical Society may adopt for the operation of the property in its reasonable discretion. So, it's a commitment that they will make it available as a public museum-type building again, and I hope I'm not misspeaking, something similar to the Old Ordinary or that type of property, and that that will continue in perpetuity with an asterisk. And the asterisk on that is if in some likely time in the future, the Historical Society deems that it's in their best interest to sell the property to a third party that is not another nonprofit, or the National Park Service, or some other organization that would maintain it as a museum, they would then have to offer the property to the Town, and at that point, the Board of Selectmen would make a determination as to whether or not the Town should purchase the property, which would have to go to another Town Meeting, or whether the Town should receive back its investment in the purchase of the property. So, this agreement governs all of those potential contingencies that we could think of as of 2020, of, you know, what could happen to the property. So, I know that's a lot of summary there, but, you know, there are three documents doing three different things, all to document and memorialize what the voters at Town Meeting approved under Article 19.
Susan, thank you very much. Before opening it up to my colleagues for questions, I just want to offer Paula, Paula Bagger, I don't know if at this time there was anything you wanted to add with respect to those documents. I know that your Board met this morning, and we appreciate your convening them on short notice in terms of this agreement. Again, before opening it up to Joe and Bill, do you have anything to add at this point?
Only my thanks to the Town for making this possible. We're very excited and can't wait to close next week and get started on the work on the property. I thought Susan did a wonderful job of summarizing the documents, though, so I have nothing to add.
Thank you. Joe, any questions for Susan or the Historical Society?
Just a few, but I'm a big fan of the Hingham Historical Society. I'm really excited that they're going to be moving forward with this. And Susan, thank you for all your work. This was not a trivial transaction, so I appreciate it. I just want to make sure that I understand a couple of things. In the grant agreement, Section 4, the term, as I understand it, the Society has six months to close, but that's not likely to take that long? Is it expected to close this year? Is that correct?
Yes, our purchase and sale agreement, as extended with the sellers, expires on December 31st, so that's why we're so glad that you helped us.
We're doing it now.
It's over the finish line.
Susan, Section 7 of the grant agreement refers to quarterly reports. Could you just let me know what those reports are expected to cover?
So, there are certain conditions that are set forth in Section 3.0, are the special conditions. Then there is, I'd say, only one other condition it would cover, which is under, I believe, Section 13 or 14, is where the obligation to put up a sign that the parties mutually agree to the language of stating that CPA funds were used. But generally, it would be, it would just be a report. Now, typically, grant agreements govern a contribution being made to the Town, and maybe it's replacing a special historic roof, or a fence, or doing some sort of project that, you know, takes a little bit of time, and, you know, the money goes out. If necessary, there's, it's more, you know, it's a different kind of project. In this case, the reports are really going to relate to the items that need to occur post-closing, so that, like I said, that would include installation of the sign, but it would also include modifying the property to meet the accessibility requirements, and it will also be bringing the preservation restriction agreement, which requires Mass. Historical Commission approval through that process. So, I think that Larry Linder, who's the Chair, you know, might be more familiar with these quarterly reports. I'm typically not reviewing them, but I think it's just, in whatever form the Historical Society needs to report to the CPC, to let them know that they're on track doing the things that they've agreed to do.
Thank you. And just one other question. Once we do this initial funding, is there any additional financial responsibility on the Town?
No.
Thank you very much. That's all I got.
Bill, questions or comments before the Board votes?
You know, I reviewed the documents. I've spoken with Susan about it. I have no questions. Do you want to, I very much want to thank the Historical Society for taking the initiative and preserving this wonderful part of our history. And I know Joe said it, Deirdre, you do a wonderful job, and you have a wonderful Board, and I, as a resident, can't thank you enough for all you do to preserve our history. That's all I have.
Thank you. I, you know, as part of this agreement, the Community Preservation Committee also has to sign this agreement, and we're fortunate to be joined tonight by the Chair of the Community Preservation Committee, you know, Larry Linder. And Larry, I didn't know if you had any questions or had any comments with respect to this agreement?
No, I'm good, and congratulations to the Historical Society and as well to the Town.
And Larry, I would just thank you and the CPC, you know, a project like this is much more, it's very complex. I know that the Community Preservation Committee had to have a lot of long, thoughtful conversations about making this kind of a financial commitment to this particular project, because it has implications for available funds for other projects. And, you know, I think the conversations last year, they were constructive, they were fact-based, I think all different points of view were looked at. So, you know, our thanks to the Community Preservation Committee for making this possible as well.
Thank you, Mary.
Is there anyone in the public who has a question or wishes to make a comment before we take up what are going to be five votes to execute these documents? Okay, seeing none, I'll maybe start out. I'd like to make a motion to enter into a grant agreement by and among the Board, the Community Preservation Committee, and the Hingham Historical Society, for the grant of $772,000 in Community Preservation Act funds approved under Article 19 by the 2020 Annual Town Meeting, in accordance with the conditions of said Article 19.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, Joe?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
Joe, you want to take the next one?
I will. I will move to enter into a Right of First Refusal, Reimbursement Agreement, and Use Restriction with the Hingham Historical Society, in accordance with the requirements and conditions of the grant agreement.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, Joe?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
Bill, you want to take the next one?
I'd make a motion to approve a preservation restriction agreement between the Hingham Historical Society and the Hingham Historical Commission, in accordance with the requirements and conditions of the grant agreement, subject to the approval of the Massachusetts Historical Commission.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, Joe?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
Since this next one is authorizing me, it's probably more appropriate for one of you to make the motion.
I'll move to authorize the Chair of the Board to execute such agreement and take all actions necessary and appropriate to effectuate the provisions of said Article 19 and the grant agreement.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, Joe?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
And I'll make a motion to authorize the dispersment of the grant funds in accordance with and subject to the terms of the grant agreement.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, Joe?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
I wish that we were all in the same room together, so that we could together look with pride on the votes that were just taken, and appreciation for all the dedicated work that has brought the Town to this. And I would also be remiss if we didn't acknowledge the Woodard family for their generosity to the Town, both in terms of making, you know, making the house available, being patient and understanding of our Town Government process. And so, we would ask Deirdre and Paula that you would please convey to the Woodards our gratitude for their generosity. Okay, we have a couple of minutes before a scheduled public hearing with National Grid, so I see that Superintendent Sylvester is on the line. Let's take up, Bill and Joe, the review of the Municipal Solid Waste Disposal Agreement with CMAS, which is not as glamorous as buying a historic house, but, you know, equally important to the running of the Town. Tom, is this you? Is this Randy?
No, thank you. I was saying bye to Deirdre. No, Randy could probably summarize this.
Randy, welcome.
Good evening. Yeah, so this is, this contract is, this original contract was done in 1999. It was a 15-year contract at the time. Around 2010, we had an opportunity to renegotiate. At that time, the rate was $117 a ton. I brought it down to $68 a ton. Again, that was for a five-year contract. It was then again due in 2015. I renegotiated again, and at the time, the cost was $83 a ton, and it went down, I negotiated it down to $60 a ton. Presently, this cost per ton to get rid of household trash is $66.24. That contract ends on December 31st. We did negotiate a new contract with CMAS, and due to market corrections, and due to the lack of options for getting rid of trash disposal and landfill closings in the state, the new rate is going up to $85 a ton. And that's approximately a $24 increase, or about $147. This contract's a five-year contract. It then goes up in January of 2022 to $97.50, for about a 15% increase, or another $75,000. Right now, it's the only option we have. We've looked elsewhere, and some of the facilities that were supposed to open had problems and swapped to recycling facilities, and they never opened up. So, in order to get rid of our trash, we're going to need to approve this new agreement with CMAS, and I'll answer any questions if you have any.
Thank you. Joe, any questions for Randy?
Randy, do you know about what percent of our trash that we take to the transfer station is comprised of compostable material? Because I've seen studies, basically statewide, it's somewhere between 20, 30-plus percent. And I'm just wondering to, you know, if the Town, if we could figure out a way to get people to be doing composting, that we would be limiting what's going there, reducing our costs. I just didn't have a sense as to what extent that's been an issue in Hingham or a policy in Hingham to try to promote that type of program.
That, it's difficult for us to do a food waste program at the transfer station.
Right.
Just because of the size of the transfer station in our compost area. As far as the amount of compost, that is, those figures are estimates.
Sure.
I'm sure it's up to about 20%, and we could save a lot of money by composting that.
Or just encouraging private, you know, private families to be doing it themselves.
Absolutely, absolutely. And there are free compost bins that we can get them, if we have the need. I can definitely get a grant through the DEP to supply those. But yes, if we took out the compostable waste, that would definitely bring down our trash numbers.
Tom, do you know if that information that Randy just talked about is on the Town website, so that our residents can access it? And if not, if you could just make arrangements, so that we could do that? That'd be great. Thank you. I appreciate that, Randy.
Sure.
That's all I have. I've reviewed the contract, and I think it's acceptable.
Bill, any questions for Randy?
Yeah, Randy, I didn't hear you, and I didn't see. What's the duration of the contract, along?
The duration is five years from January 1st.
Okay, great. And, you know, I know, I'm pretty good friends with Steve Messenger, and I know you and him really do a wonderful job up there with the recycling effort, so thank you for that.
Thank you.
Like my colleagues, I've reviewed this agreement, and I would add to the points that Joe made, that, you know, to the extent that people are commingling any recycling into the household trash, you know, that is part of what is paid for in the CMAS contract. So, you know, while composting is a way to reduce the amount of household trash, making sure that we are recycling everything that's possible is another important way to do that. Is there anyone in the public who has a question or wishes to make a comment about this agreement before the Board votes? Okay, seeing none, I'd accept the motion.
Sure. I'd move to authorize the Chair to sign the Municipal Solid Waste Disposal Agreement with CMAS effective January 1, 2021, through December 31, 2025.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, Joe?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
Mary? Aye. Randy, we're going to ask you to stand for just a second. Our next agenda item is a snow plowing policy. Joe, I believe this is you?
Yes, I wanted this to be on the agenda for two reasons. First, I really wanted to send my compliments to the DPW staff. After the snow last week, I was informed that cohesive public schools were forced to be remote on Thursday, because the cohesive DPW did not clear the parking lots on time. So, it wasn't trivial. We take it for granted, and in Hingham, we did. We did accomplish it. So, thank you. Really, thanks to our DPW Superintendent Randy Sylvester, to Mike Mullin, who's the Row Supervisor, and really to the office staff, who's been handling all the behind-the-scenes paperwork for making our snow policy happen. And the second reason I wanted to have this on the agenda is just to review with members of the public. So, every year, we get snow, and there's always questions about what gets plowed, when it gets plowed. And so, I just want to make sure we're all Um, and so I just want to make sure we're all familiar with the town's policy with respect to plowing. Um, and the policy is we plow the town's public roads. We do not plow private driveways. And for private ways, the town has a policy that was adopted back in nineteen eighty-one and was last amended in nineteen ninety-three. Um, has six points. I want to just cover those. First, um, well, there's a general, the, the selectmen adopted the policy. It was respect to plowing private ways which are open to the public and which are designated annually to be plowed. And the six points are first, private ways within subdivisions in which the roadway is ten years of age or less and have been approved and constructed in accordance with the rules and regulations of the Hingham Planning Board under the sub-control law, subdivision control law, but not yet accepted as public ways will be plowed and are not subject to the other conditions here. Second, specifically excluded from plowing are non-municipal, multi-unit housing complexes, parking lots, shopping center plazas, areas or malls and similar areas. Third, the private ways must contain two or more residences in existence and constructed prior to lot, to July one, nineteen eighty, with each residence fronting on the private way. Fourth, the private way must be safe for plowing equipment to enter the area. The road surface of the public way must be paved in a manner acceptable to the Superintendent of Public Works and be in good repair, and the way must be at least ten feet in width throughout its entire length. Fifth, the private way at the time of plowing must be clear of vehicles. And sixth, an agreement must be signed by all owners of property on said private way, releasing and waiving any liability against the town, its agents, officers, servants or employees, and agreeing to indemnify and hold harmless the town, its agents, servants, officers and employees from any damages whatsoever. Uh, and that agreement must be executed each year. Um, so those are the rules that apply. Um, I know Randy, it, it falls to you and your department to enforce that. Uh, it, it's a policy that's been longstanding in the town and I just wanted to thank you uh, for all the good work of the department and to make sure that the folks in the town are aware of the policy. Thank you.
Bill, anything to add?
Uh, just I took comment, I was on the planning board, a lot of, um, residents would complain to us who lived in, uh, fairly new subdivisions about the town not plowing their streets. And it's pretty clear in the subdivision documents when you buy a house in that area that the roads are private roads. Uh, there is a, as Joe alluded to, there is a policy in place for acceptance of a public way, but the road has to come up to the standards of the town. Um, when you, when you buy, um, when you buy a house and agree to it being private, that means you get to plow it yourself. So Joe's exactly right. Um, and, you know, there is, like I said, there was a policy in place to, to, um, make a road a public roadway, but it requires that the, the residents put some work into the road to make it up to our specifications. And my second comment is, yeah, Randy, you did a great job of the last snowstorm, you know, in comparison to, uh, neighboring towns. Uh, Hingham did great work, so thank you for, um, thank you for that, Randy.
Yeah, uh, I would, uh, I would echo my colleagues' comments. Is there anyone in the public who has a question or wishes to make a comment with respect to the snow plowing policy? Okay, uh, seeing none, Randy, uh, thank you. Thank you very much for joining us this evening. Uh, the next item of business and, uh, before I get into the, uh, the public hearing, we, just to give the, uh, audience a sense of timing, we have a public hearing, uh, with National Grid. Uh, when that is concluded, uh, if it is, if it is before seven-thirty, uh, the board will go through its COVID nineteen update, public comments, appointments and town administrator reports. We have a joint session this evening with our colleagues on the Advisory Committee and School Committee that will begin at seven-thirty and we do not envision beginning that any sooner than seven-thirty because both of those boards have posted for that time. Uh, so the next item of business is a request for National Grid, uh, for gas main replacements on Stoddard Road, Meadowview Road and Pleasant Street. Uh, we are joined by Mary Mulroney from National Grid as well as Town Engineer J R Fry. Uh, uh, J R, should, uh, can you walk us through this or would you prefer Mary do that?
I can jump right in.
Thank you.
So, uh, National Grid is proposing, uh, to replace, uh, abandon in place uh, existing gas main and replace for, with new plastic main. Um, approximately eight hundred feet of two-inch main in Stoddard Road, three hundred and forty feet of two-inch main in Meadowview Road and one hundred and fifty-five feet of two-inch main in Pleasant Street. Uh, really what you have is, um, a single main line that, uh, originates at the intersection of Union Street and, and, uh, Stoddard Road and runs around past the terminus of S- Stoddard Road where it turns into Pleasant Street and then continues in Pleasant Street for a hundred and fifty-five feet. And then there is a, uh, teed main off of Stoddard Road that runs down Meadowview Road. Uh, and, uh, so all of this is in that, uh, one small neighborhood.
Okay, and, um, J R, if, if approved this evening, um, when will this work begin and how long will it take? And, um, what steps will be taken to, um, minimize the disruption to, uh, residents?
Sure, so the, um, the work will begin, uh, by National Grid, providing weather allows as soon as they are able. Uh, all of these roads are under consideration for paving next year. And so they've advanced their, uh, main replacement work in this area uh, to facilitate the scheduled reconstruction of those roads. The, um, in order to minimize impacts, uh, to the neighborhood and to the high school, um, they will be coordinating with me on bus schedules for Union Street to make sure that, uh, we avoid any impact to, uh, access to the school by students, uh, whether it's from being dropped off or, uh, if they're bringing the buses. And, um, the construction itself, uh, once they're out of Union Street, um, it'll be standard construction times, uh, generally seven to three, um, although I think we permit up to four P M.
Thank you. Uh, Joe, any questions for J R or for Mary Mulroney from National Grid, who's also on the line?
Well, really thanks to both of them for putting this together. Um, I just had a question about, um, the high school, uh, I mean, J R, you, you mentioned it. I mean, this, this is right there. Um, what about the, the noise and disruption of, uh, classroom work?
It's removed enough from the school that I, I honestly believe it won't be, um, a, uh, significant disruption at all. Um, between the actual installation of the school and the dis- the actual distance. Um, also, once they're out of Union Street, they're simply going to continue being further and further removed. So, so I don't believe it'll be an impact at all.
Okay, thank you. Um, uh, that, that's it. I've looked at the document. I'm, I'm satisfied.
Bill?
Note that the age of one of the lines being replaced is almost ninety-five years old. So that's, uh, definitely in need of it.
Yes.
It's amazing it lasted that long.
Yeah, well, it's, um, you know, it, it's, it's based on their leakage rate and, and the, the safety rating that they give these pipes, but once they're aware of our intention to repave a road in order to, uh, protect the integrity of that road and avoid any, you know, future construction that would have to be done, it's in everyone's best interest for them to move it forward, um, even if it is holding up fairly well. Cause it's only a matter of time.
Bill, anything else?
I know, thank you.
Uh, I've, I've read the packet. I'm satisfied. Um, I see that, um, we have someone who wishes to be recognized. Um, I'd ask that you please state, uh, anyone being recognized, please state your name and your address for the record, and please direct questions and comments to the Chair. Um, I recognize Erin Kelly. Erin, if you can unmute yourself, please.
Hi, thank you. Uh, Erin Kelly's Seven Stoddard Road. Um, first of all, thank you for your coordination to, um, get this done. And by and large, I am fully in support as a resident, fully in support of this. But I did want to mention two things. Um, currently Five Stoddard Road has had some construction, um, going on. So there is on a, on a regular basis five to seven additional construction vehicles on the road. In addition to that, on the intersection of Union and Stoddard on the high school side, there's a fairly large construction project going on. So I say that, um, as a comment and also, I guess, raising as a concern. Just I have small children and it was a fairly kid-heavy street. So I'm just hoping that perhaps there's a way we can mitigate some of those additional hazards with not only what might be a very reasonable amount of National Grid construction adding to construction already in existence on this street.
Sure, so, yeah, um, if I may, Mary. National Grid will, uh, they will have a detail officer on site, uh, at least one. On occasion, there may even be two. Um, and those detail officers are there to assist to make sure that pedestrians, um, are steered clear of any potential hazards eh, uh, as well as managing any traffic that comes through. Um, so, construction with the private residents would not require uh, a detail or construction that's fully on town property and not within the right-of-way would not require a detail necessarily, depending on the nature of the construction. So, um, but in this case, there will be a, a detail officer and possibly two, uh, on-site to direct people away from any hazardous condition. Um, I will also say that the, um, trench work that they do uh, is generally patched up or covered over with a plate if necessary at the end of every day. So it's made safe, uh, for passerby. And, uh, there is not i- any hazard, uh, that you'd be exposed to or that your children would be exposed to, um, other than a potential tripping hazard would, you know, would, would be the most of it, but they try to minimize even that to the extent they can. Uh, have I addressed your question?
You have. I think my, um, I, I think my concern is less to do with tripping and more to do with being able to gain access to the road with an already rather construction, a construct, excuse me, constricted area.
Well, they'll make sure, th- they're required to make sure that the, that a r- route of travel remains available to the residents on the street. And the, uh, and the police detail can also assist in directing you into and out of your driveway if they happen to be working, um, in front of your home. They will also, you know, they'll have a foreman on-site. Um, and so if you, if you see them coming closer to your home or you see them preparing to do work for the day, you might talk to somebody and just confirm about how far they think they're gonna be at a certain time. It may be more convenient for you to, uh, move a vehicle onto the street away from their construction area to make sure that you can, uh, get out.
J R, what, what I might also suggest, because I think, um, and, and thank you for, for the responses. I, I think as, as Ms. Kelly was asking her question, it also just struck me that there's gonna be a lot of intense, there's, there's gonna be intense activity around that site. You know, you've got a lot of intense activity with the, with the vehicles going in and out on these home projects, and then you're gonna add national, National Grid vehicles. I know that you and Mary are gonna work towards scheduling this and I know that this work needs to be completed before, uh, you know, before we want to pave the roads in the spring. What I might just ask before you and Mary finalize dates is perhaps if you could just take a run over there and just observe for yourself the amount of activity that's being generated both by Five Stoddard and the house at the corner of Union and Stoddard, just to kind of size it up and, and make sure that, you know, you're, you're comfortable with that. I, uh, you know, I, I know that that can, that area can get congested very quickly. Um, so if, if maybe you could do that before finalizing dates with Mary, uh, that might be helpful.
Uh, one thing that we may work with National Grid on is simply, um, the location of their own vehicles during construction. Um, I know that when they'd go to do Meadowview Road, that's gonna be particularly tight uh, because of the narrowness of that road and, um, the likelihood that the, the full roadway will be restricted at times which would mean that most of the people that live on that road will be moving their cars onto Stoddard Road and Pleasant Street. So making it, which would exacerbate the condition. So we, I'll definitely go take a look and then I'll work with National Grid on, um, making sure that their vehicles are appropriately located.
Uh, I, I would just also, you know, a- ask you to be mindful of starting and completing this work during a time when if there is a plowable snow event, um, you also, you also lose some width of the street, uh, due to plowing. So, um, I'd ask you to keep that in mind. Um, I see that there's another hand. Um, I'd, I'd like to recognize, uh, the caller. Uh, the last four digits end in three, four, four, one. If you could please, uh, unmute and identify yourself with your name and address, please.
John Thomas.
Good evening, Mr. Thomas. Welcome.
Eight Stoddard Road. Um, no problem. What I've heard, I've listened to the input of everybody. Um, my, my concern is next year when the road gets repaved, that we do not have granite curbing put on the street in Meadowview as has been done around Center Hingham and some of the other neighborhoods recently. We'd prefer to stay with a, I guess it's called a Cape Cod burn, but just a, a blacktop coming to the edge of the lawn.
Thank, thank you, Mr. Thomas. Uh, anyone else? Okay, uh, seeing none, uh, I would accept a motion.
Sure, I will, um, move, uh, to approve the gra- the request of National Grid to install and maintain approximately eight hundred feet of two-inch gas main in Stoddard Road, three hundred and forty feet of two-inch gas main in Meadowview Road and a hundred and fifty-five feet of two-inch gas main in Pleasant Street. The gas main in Stoddard Road will originate at the intersection of Union Street and Stoddard Road connecting into the existing eight-inch gas main and continuing easterly in Stoddard Road to its terminus at Pleasant Street. The gas main in Pleasant Street will originate at the terminus of Stoddard Road and continue in Pleasant Street to completion at approximately number eighty-five Pleasant Street. And the gas main in Meadowview Road will originate at the intersection of Stoddard Road and Meadowview Road and continue to Meadowview Road to completion of appro- at approximately number ten Meadowview Road. These gas mains will, will replace existing two-inch bear steel nineteen twenty-five, nineteen twenty-eight, nineteen fifty-two and nineteen twenty-six respectively. And five feet of two-inch plastic in Meadowview Road nineteen seventy-seven. The age of the abandoned main is between sixty-eight and ninety-five years old. This approval is subject to the stipulations of the Department of Public Works as outlined in the letter dated December one, twenty twenty.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, Joe?
Um, do we have a second?
Uh, Bill seconded.
Oh, sorry, I didn't hear. Yes, I.
Bill?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
Uh, J R, thank you. Mary, um, Mary, thank you. And, um, Mary, on behalf of the town, uh, we are very grateful for National Grid, for all your ongoing support and your partnership, uh, both not only in, uh, replacing aging gas mains like the ones that we're doing tonight, but also working with the town to coordinate that with our road building program. We know that this year with COVID nineteen, it, it made, uh, it made your job and the job of your crews more challenging. Uh, we appreciate the fact that National Grid was able to continue its very important work uh, while ensuring the safety of, uh, of, of everybody on the National Grid team. So, uh, our thanks and appreciation and, and best wishes for you, uh, and Happy New Year.
Um, thank you very much and National Grid, thanks you for always working with us and, um, hope everybody there has a happy and healthy holiday. Thank you.
Mary, same to you. Um, we have- Um, we have about ten minutes until our joint session is beginning. So uh, Tom, why don't we do the COVID nineteen update if we could, please?
Happy to, Mary. Thank you. Uh, so this is a little bit uh, lengthier than perhaps usual, but there's a lot going on as we've all read regarding the pandemic. And I think it's uh, a lot of very important information. So um, so bear with me uh, and Michelle as we go through this uh, this update. So regarding COVID nineteen data, as of yesterday, the Mass Department of Public Health is reporting three hundred and fourteen thousand, eight hundred and fifty total confirmed COVID nineteen cases in Massachusetts, of which twenty-one thousand nineteen are in Plymouth County. Hingham cases continue to rise. As of Friday, Hingham remains in the state's yellow COVID nineteen category with six hundred and ninety-eight total cases compared with four hundred and seventy total cases one month ago. Our average daily incidence rate is forty point two per hundred thousand people over the prior fourteen days compared to eleven point nine one month ago. These are big increases. The percent of people testing positive for COVID nineteen is also rising. The po- the percent positivity for the last fourteen days was four point two six percent for Hingham compared to two point zero three percent one month ago. There are almost two thousand people hospitalized with COVID nineteen across the state at this point. And COVID nineteen deaths have also been increasing since October. So some new state measures. Because of these trends, Governor Baker announced new COVID nineteen restrictions today that will go into effect and on twelve oh one AM on Saturday, December twenty-sixth. They will continue until at least Sunday, January tenth with the possibility of an extension. The new measures reduce the allowable occupancy from current capacity levels of forty percent down to twenty-five percent in multiple sectors. A few of the highlights. One, uh, the new capacity limit will now apply to restaurants. Capacity will be set at twenty-five percent of pre-COVID seating capacity and distancing between tables and other requirements will remain in place. This does not include employees. Two, limits at indoor event venues are being reduced to ten people. Limits at outdoor event venues are being reduced to twenty-five people. Current limits at pres- at private residences remain the same, ten for indoors and twenty-five for outdoors. Office spaces will be required to reduce capacity to twenty-five percent. There will continue to be allowances for offices with critical services such as public safety, public health, and other critical services. And K through twelve schools will continue to be exempted from these capacity limits will need to follow the DC, uh, DC standards and guidelines. These new requirements signal that the COVID nineteen situation is worsening significantly. Please make sure that you adhere to social distancing, face covering, hand washing, and other public health guidance to prevent the spread of COVID nineteen. Regarding a vaccine rollout. Vaccine distribution began in Massachusetts last week. The state has announced a three-phase vaccine rollout plan that corresponds with CDC recommendations. Phase one will run from about December twenty twenty through February of twenty-one and will cover the following people listed in order of priority. A, clinical and non-clinical healthcare workers doing direct and COVID-facing care. B, long-term care facilities, rest homes, and assisted living facilities. C, police, fire, and emergency medical services. D, congregate care settings, including corrections and shelters. E, home-based healthcare workers, and F, healthcare workers doing non-COVID-facing care, such as dentists, behavioral health clinicians, hospice palliative care professionals, et cetera. Most healthcare workers and first responders are being vaccinated at their place of employment. Individuals living and working in long-term care will be vaccinated as part of the Federal Pharmacy Partnership Program. For example, residents at Linden Parnes will be vaccinated through a partnership with CBS. Vaccination for individuals in other congregate settings, example given uh, group homes, shelters, corrections, et cetera, will be considered by the management of those facilities. Phase two will run from about February through March to of twenty-one. And this will cover the following people, again, listed in priority order. A, individuals with two-plus comorbid conditions, high-risk, i.e. high risk for COVID nineteen complications. B, other workers, including early education, K twelve tran- K twelve transit workers, including Uber, Lyft, rideshare services, uh, grocery uh, workers, including convenience store workers, utility, utilities, food and agriculture, sanitation, public works, and public health workers, vaccine development workers, and food pantry workers. Also, uh, C is adult, adults aged sixty-five and over. And D, individuals with one comorbid condition. That's all phase two. Finally, phase three is expected to start in April. At, at that point, the vaccine is expected to be available to the general public. Once the vaccine is available to the general public, public vaccine clinics will be available on the CDC's interactive website, vaccinefinder.org. People will also be able to check with your primary care provider, local pharmacy, or local health department. The town's vaccine planning group is coordinating logistics for the town so that we're prepared to do our part. At this point, the town is eligible to request vaccines from DPH for police, fire, and emergency medical services personnel. We are partnering with Cohasset, Hull, Norwell, and Situate to apply to DPH to facilitate vaccination of public safety personnel for these five communities. If DPH approves, we anticipate coordinating clinics for public safety employees in January. I'll turn it over to Michelle for the remainder of the update.
Thanks, Tom. So I want to start with a testing site update. Um, we're asking people to please continue to take advantage of the new Empathy COVID nineteen testing facility at three oh eight Cushing Street if you need it. The site is open from seven AM to four PM Mondays through Saturdays. And Empathy has been accommodating over two hundred COVID nineteen tests per day at this point. The testing site will close early on Thursday, December twenty-four, so they'll close at two PM instead of four PM that day. And they will be closed on Friday for the Christmas holiday. Please visit empathy.org. That's M-P-H, uh, P-A-T-H-Y dot O-R-G slash schedule to book an appointment. Appointments from seven AM to ten AM each testing day are reserved for Town of Hingham residents and employees. The appointments are reserved for residents and employees, but the walk-ins are not um, given priority that way. And then finally, we wanted to end with some holiday guidance from the state. So as we enter the holiday season, DPH continues to urge residents to follow the public health guidance that we know will help keep, keep people safe, stop the spread of COVID nineteen, and prevent deaths. This year, DPH asks residents to do the following. Limit in-person celebrations to household members only. Postpone or cancel travel this holiday season. If you do choose to travel, you need to comply with Massachusetts travel order requirements. They're also asking that you follow the current state gathering size limits and sector-specific workplace safety standards. Right now, as Tom mentioned, indoor gatherings at private residences are limited to ten people and outdoor gatherings at private residences are limited to twenty-five people. Some lower-risk celebrations and activities include the following. Hosting a virtual holiday dinner with extended friend, family or friends. Preparing foods for family and neighbors and delivering them in a no-contact way. Virtually attending your traditional holiday activities, such as a visit with Santa. Considering virtual caroling or reciting, where you can provide a link to your virtual caroling to the people that you want to sing to or with. And finally, viewing holiday lights from your car with those that you live with. We know it's hard to maintain the holiday spirit in this environment. Please be conscious of the continued COVID risk and celebrate the holidays in a safe way to protect your health and the health of others. None of us want COVID for Christmas. Please also take some time to call your neighbors or friends who might feel especially isolated this season. We wish everyone a safe and healthy new year. Thank you.
Mary, if, if you don't mind, I'd just like to underscore the message in case it got lost. And, and there was a lot of information. COVID is surging. COVID is surging. We all have to take this seriously. We want to get back to our lives as normal. The best way to do it is to knock down the surge. Pay attention, follow the guidelines, and please, let's all protect ourselves, our families, and our community.
Thank you, Tom. Joe, any questions for Tom or Michelle with respect to the COVID nineteen update?
Uh, no questions. Uh, Tom and Michelle have been putting incredible amount of time, effort, uh, and their hearts into this effort. So thank you both.
Bill?
Um, Michelle, thank you for your work here. Um, Tom, thank you for putting a plan in place. Um, do we know when our first responders, uh, in terms of uh, the timeline when, when they'll be getting the vaccine, since that's something that we're gonna be partnering with other towns with?
Sure, it's looking like it'll happen in the first week of January, Bill.
Great, thank you.
You're welcome.
And um, Tom, just a follow-up question on that. Um, down the road, do we anticipate that the Town of Hingham will be part of the effort to vaccinate our citizens?
Yes, that's still a little bit unclear. We'll, we'll be prepared to do so and to play a role as appropriate. Um, it's a little bit unclear as to what CDC and DPH will, will want done and by whom and when and how, et cetera. Uh, there's a lot of partnerships being formed for different purposes. So I, I don't want to suggest to the public that town, the town will be um, you know, coordinating all of that uh, vaccination effort, uh, but we'll, we'll be here and prepared and ready to do it. Um, should that, should that occur.
Thank you. And um, I would, I would echo my, my thanks to both of you as well to um, you know, e- everybody within the town and the school department who has been working to uh, keep our community safe, to pivot and respond to changing circumstances. Um, and in particular, I would just like to recognize uh, Susan Sarny, our executive health officer. You know, public health departments in Massachusetts, um, you know, it's, it's not uncommon for a public health department to be a couple of people. And when COVID hit, it has certainly strained everybody. But boards of health and, and health departments in particular had massive responsibilities um, with, with very small staff and um, our, our appreciation and gratitude for Susan and her team um, and their, their commitment to help keeping us all safe. Uh, does anyone have a question or wish to make a comment with respect to the COVID nineteen update that Tom and Michelle just provided? Okay, uh, seeing none, uh, I have just a little bit after seven thirty, so um, I, I, I noticed that over the last fifteen or twenty minutes, the number of people who have phoned into this meeting has increased significantly. So welcome to everyone and thank you for taking the time, uh, particularly during a holiday week to uh, join in, in an important community conversation, the first of many conversations that we're gonna be having uh, with respect to town finances. Um, before I begin, I'd like to uh, invite Bob Curley, Chair of the Advisory Committee, to call his board to order. And Carrie Neat, Chair of the School Committee, to call her board to order.
Thank you, Mary, and season's greetings to everyone. The Advisory Committee has a quorum, and I'd like to call us in the section at seven thirty-three PM. Thank you.
Thanks, Bob. Welcome. Carrie?
Uh, yeah, thank you, Mary. And we have all of our members here too, so I would like to call us to order at this, the Hingham School Committee to order at seven thirty-three PM.
Terrific. Um, just by way of background and by way of process, um, about a month ago, uh, the Advisory Committee uh, asked if uh, Tom, uh, Town Administrator Tom Mayo, Assistant Town Administrator Michelle Montziger and I might be willing to come to the Advisory Committee to talk about town finances. Uh, recognizing that this is an important conversation, um, we actually thought that it might be a better idea to convene a joint meeting so that uh, so that my colleagues, Joe Fisher and Bill Ramsey, could join. And we also thought it was important to invite our school committee colleagues. Um, Bob sent a list of a bunch of topics. Um, they kind of cover a gambit of different things. And what we've tried to do is to put together a little bit of information to share. Um, this, the information you're about to see is going to be posted on the town website. And uh, I think what we'd like to do is to just walk through the information, uh, then open it up to the Board of Selectmen for questions and comments, to the Advisory Committee for questions and comments, to the School Committee for questions and comments, and also members of the public, uh, questions and comments. And again, I would just reinforce that this is uh, this is the beginning of a conversation about town finances. This is kind of the time of year when we start to talk about these things. Um, so Michelle, I think you're gonna share your screen. If you can. Um, we'd actually just like to start with a little bit of good news. I think, um, Dr. Austin in the School Committee uh, had conveyed through uh, various me, uh, some good news last week that came. Um, Michelle, if you could advance the slide, please. Last week, the Massachusetts School Building Authority um, made two really important invitations for the Town of Hingham, and this is a really big deal for our community. Um, first of all, Plymouth River School was accepted into the MSBA Accelerated Repair Program so that a, a long-awaited project to replace the windows at Plymouth River School will be occurring. Um, people may remember that in two thousand seventeen, when the then Board of Selectmen negotiated a development agreement, um, we set aside one million dollars to replace the windows at Plymouth River School. And we've been saving that money. And the state is now going to contribute towards um, a portion of that project. And we envision that at this year's town meeting, uh, at the, at the twenty twenty-one annual town meeting, voters will be asked to um, appropriate money so that the project can be completed. Um, this is a summer project. It will most likely be completed in the summer of twenty twenty-one. Um, and so that project will be completed by then. Um, Foster School was invited into what we call the feasibility stage of the core building program. And again, this is an important step towards either renovating or replacing Foster School. Um, again, this is, this is part of a journey that began in two thousand seventeen when Town Meeting authorized it funding for a feasibility study. Um, Town Meeting has subsequently uh, authorized additional money. And based on the MSBA timeline, uh, we would envision that if things were to move along, a school would be completed in time for occupancy for the fall of twenty twenty-four. Um, to date, the Town of Hingham has committed just over two million dollars for these projects. And as I mentioned, an additional appropriation request is anticipated for twenty twenty-one. Michelle, if you could advance the slide. The um, uh, these are just copies of some of the correspondence the town has received, and we would just make two important points to the community. First of all, with Foster School, and this is just a quote from the MSBA letter, "Moving forward on the MSBA process requires collaboration for, with the MSBA. And communities that get ahead of the MSBA without approval will not be eligible for grant funding." I know there are some people, I know this feels sometimes like a long process. The MSBA has a defined and deliberate process. And there are millions of dollars that can come, of state tax dollars that are gonna come into Hingham um, as we work with the MSBA. Uh, I would also say that um, with respect to Plymouth River School, um, while the town is required to appropriate money for the feasibility study by February of next year, uh, the funds that were set aside in twenty seventeen already satisfy that requirement. So these are two important infrastructure projects that will be, that will be moving along very quickly for the town. Uh, so that was Bob's first item on his list. Uh, Michelle, if you could turn the slide. The next item is, how are we doing in, in fiscal year twenty-one with our financial management plan? Um, last week, the forecast group met to review November results. We are on track with our plan. Uh, our revenue is coming in a little higher than we expected. Our expense controls are working. The town has submitted uh, over two point three million dollars in CARES Act reimbursements. We've also submitted reimbursements for FEMA for public safety reimbursements to the, to the tune of almost eight hundred thousand dollars. Um, some good news that we received from Plymouth County yesterday is that the um, the legislation that uh, that President Trump is hopefully going to sign in the next few days does include a provision that would extend the eligibility of CARES Act reimbursement through the end of twenty twenty-one. Hingham was, um, Hingham's share of CARES Act money was about three point six million dollars. We've committed about two point three million. But if um, if in fact that stays within the bill, that is very good news for the Town of Hingham as well as for all communities in Massachusetts. Um, we should note that um, you know, as we look ahead, we see in twenty twenty-one that expenses for um, COVID testing for some of our staff as well as the renting of Saint Jerome School um, would be eligible for that funding. So again, that's some very good news. Our next quarterly update with this group will be in early January. And at that time, we expect to have updated revenue projections and updated expense forecasts that include reimbursements. So we think that next month is going to be, it's going to give us a much better idea of where things stand. Next slide, Michelle. The Advisory Committee also asked about revenue, and just wanted to give a little bit of perspective about revenue and Hingham's tax burden because that's been a subject of conversation for quite some time. The graph on the top of the page shows Hingham revenue growth for the last 15 years. And the bottom line is that our revenue growth is slowing down. It's gone from 5.3% per year to about 3.5% a year. And the graph on the bottom shows Hingham's 2020 revenue compared to the benchmark communities, the 19 towns that Hingham compares ourselves to. What you'll notice is that while we are ranked kind of in the middle, there is a lot of variation between the highest revenue community Lexington and the lowest community for revenue Hall. Slide, Michelle. Recognizing that our revenue growth has been slowing down, past and present boards of selectmen have taken many steps to grow our revenue. We've adopted the meals tax that has yielded over 3/4 of $1 million in revenue. We created an ambulance service that last year brought in $1.5 million to the town. And we have a standard process to review fees and permits every three years. Town Meeting adopted 43D, which is helping to accelerate commercial development. And our South Hingham Study Group has put together a great body of work that will help as we look to develop the South Hingham Corridor. We've also looked at direct budget reimbursements. That's a very fancy way of saying grants and revolving funds. And we not only look at making sure that we're using those funds, but we also look at grant funding. And in calendar year 2019, the town of Hingham received just under $3 million in grants. I'd also just make a note that the Weir River Water System is now owned by the town of Hingham. But when that was set up, even though it is exempt from property taxes because it is municipally owned, the Weir River Water System makes what's called a payment in lieu of taxes or pilot payment to the town, which is basically a payment that would be equivalent to the property tax bill they were paid if privately owned. We have a similar agreement with Hingham Light. So our tax revenue has been unaffected, our town revenues have been unaffected by the purchase of the water company. Slide, Michelle. This comes from our five-year forecast, and it's a look at our revenue picture. And, you know, the reason, the main reason that revenue growth is slowing down is because new growth is slowing down. Our new growth forecast is based on building permit activity. In a typical year, we usually have a little over half a million dollars of building permit activity for things like homeowners, you know, renovating their houses or perhaps a new construction. If you look at our new growth in, for example, in fiscal year 20, when it was about $1.4 million, that was one of the developments along the 3A corridor. We get a lot of new growth money when we have big developments, but we're also very careful not to forecast those until we know when the revenue is coming in. Right now, we don't see any of those large projects that have been advanced to the point where we can count on them as revenue. I would also point out that we have half a million dollars in what we call unused levy capacity. That is the result of a middle school tax relief program. It is within the town and the board's discretion to levy to the full amount. We could levy that half a million dollars and collect half a million dollars more in revenue. The reason that that hasn't happened to date is because, you may recall that in 2019, Annual Town Meeting adopted a senior citizen means-tested property tax relief proposal that if it was fully funded, would cost about half a million dollars. Our thought was that this was, if the special legislation were passed, the unused levy capacity would be a potential source of funding. This is a decision point that the town will have moving forward. Slide, Michelle. Just to take a little bit of a look at Hingham versus our benchmark communities. On the left-hand side, you'll see the residential tax rate, which is typically expressed in, for every $1,000 in assessed value. So Hingham's tax rate for FY '20 was $11.81. You multiply that by the assessed value of your home, you divide it by 1,000, and you get your tax bill. As you notice, our residential tax rate is one of the lowest as compared to our benchmark communities. On the right-hand side, you see the percentage of our tax levy that comes from residential property taxes. Residential property taxes account for almost 89% of Hingham's tax levy. So what that means is that if we have any kind of a tax increase, the residents of Hingham are paying for the majority of that. If you look, for example, at the bottom of that slide, you'll see that Canton, you know, they get 61.2% of their tax levy from residential. They have a pretty developed commercial base. In fiscal year 21, the average assessed value home in Hingham is about $877,000. And the property tax bill is just over $10,000. And the property tax bill increases by 2.5% a year, which is about $256. Slide, Michelle. The average single-family tax bill in Hingham has grown over the past 20 years from $4,400 to just under $10,000. And the growth in the tax bill has outpaced inflation. If you look at the average single-family tax bill on the bottom of the slide comparing Hingham to our benchmark communities, again, you'll kind of see we're in the middle. Hingham's average tax bill is about $10,000. If you look on the very far left-hand side, the average single-family tax bill in Weston is over $20,000. It's about $15,000 in Wellesley. And then if you look at the other end of the scale, it's about $5,000 in Weymouth. But, you know, as we're looking at some of these metrics, we also think that it's important to look at, look at tax bills with respect to the income level of a single family in a community. Slide, Michelle. So on the top, you'll see the percentage that the average single-family tax bill as a percentage of income represents. So in 2020, the average single-family tax bill was about 9.4% of household income. If you look at the bottom of the slide, you'll see that same information for all of our benchmark communities. And notice, for example, that communities on the very far left, like Rockland and Hall, their average single-family tax bill is a higher percentage of their income. But remember, a minute ago, I said that the average property tax bill in Wellesley was $15,000. Notice that Wellesley, that that represents under 10% of the average, 10% of the income in Wellesley. They're to the right of Hingham. So, you know, what that means is that while, for example, Wellesley has a tax, average tax bill that's 50% higher in Hingham, it's a smaller part of the pie because the income levels in Wellesley are so much higher than Hingham. And, you know, as we're looking at tax rates and we're looking at, and we're looking at finances and comparing to other communities, an important part is not just looking at kind of where we rank, but what that means. And I think that we also want to be mindful not just of where we stand, but the relative income levels in communities. Because a $10,000 tax bill to many residents in our community is probably the biggest bill that they have. Where in other communities, it may not be as, as big a piece of their pie. Slide, please, Michelle. These are some operating budget trends from the last 10 years, five years, and three years. And, you know, what you notice over the last several years is that the rate of increase, the annual increase in the education budget has consistently been the highest over the last nine years. The townwide expenses in 2009, that was the first year that the town was funding OPEB, our post-employment benefits. But I would also point out that if you look over the last five years, townwide expenses have been virtually flat. And that is the result of steps taken by the town to manage our health insurance. We moved out of the Plymouth County Plan into the State Group Insurance Plan. And I think one of the questions as a town that we're going to have to consider moving forward is what sort of health insurance rate increases are we going to see over the next five years? Particularly given everything that's happened with COVID. Slide, Michelle. If we look at total spending by budget category, again, what you'll notice is that in 2019, we spent about 26% of the revenue we collected in municipal budgets. That's police, fire, DPW, all of the important town hall offices, about 52% on education, and just under 22% in townwide costs. Those are things like group insurance, debt service. The school portion of that is about 61%. The municipal share is about 39%. The numbers you see on the right-hand side represent total spending by budget category for our benchmark communities. And what this indicates is that relative to our benchmark communities of the money that we spend in Hingham, we devote more of, we devote 2% more of it to education than our benchmark communities. Slide, Michelle. As we look ahead to, as we think about 2022, there are a couple of budget considerations that we need to keep in mind. In the past, when East School was first opened, the original override request was $2.5 million. And people that were here will recall that that was in the middle of the Great Recession. And the override that was actually passed by Town Meeting was about $1.1 million. I would say, as a member of the Advisory Committee, it was my experience from 2011 to about 2015 that a lot of the education budget increases, and they were, you know, 4% or 5%. A lot of that was, was to try to realize the full benefit of four elementary schools. So we were, instead of sharing assistant principals, each school had its own assistant principal, instead of sharing adjustment counselors. This was also the time when we created the budget capacity to fund our post-employment benefit liability, which is about $1 million a year. What I would just say to people is that those were a couple of significant steps that we took to mitigate the impact of past tax increases. The present situation, increased service and resource demands across the town. And some of those demands were made, have been made more apparent during the pandemic. The pandemic, in some ways, has disproportionately affected some of our most vulnerable citizens and some of our most vulnerable students. Capital outlay continues to be funded at the low end of the recommended range. And the backlog of capital outlay projects seems to be growing. Our snow and ice budget and our legal services budgets are well below the five- and 10-year averages. We say that that's a structural deficit. That's something that we need to address as a town. And lastly, in the present, we do have some significant balances in revolving and stabilization funds. We have, I think it's about $400,000 in a building revolving fund as of June of last year, and it's probably changed since then. I believe there was close to $4 million in education revolving funds. Looking ahead to the future, there is a lot of uncertainty as to the financial impact of the pandemic on town revenue and the financial impact of the pandemic on household budgets. Unemployment in Massachusetts has dropped. It's now 7.6%, which is more in line with the national average. But there's a lot of uncertainty as to what's going to happen in the first quarter. And as I said earlier, health insurance rates, over the past few years, health insurance has gone up by 2%, by 3%, and that's really helped us balance the budget. A really important question is, is, you know, whether those rates will continue to grow at that rate or whether they will accelerate. Slide, Michelle. You know, in terms of our town budgeting process, our town financial policy that is set by the Advisory Committee is foundational to our budget process. In a typical year, we do a first cut at a revenue forecast in November. We look at our tax levy, we look at local receipts, we get input from our state representatives on state aid, and then we build expense budgets, keeping the available revenue in mind, and go through a process to sort of reconcile the two. Right now, there is still a lot of uncertainty as far as even the state budget for the current fiscal year 21. And we do not expect that we will have any sort of a look as to the state budget until at least January of '22. And we've been told that even at that time, it could be somewhat uncertain. So the bottom line is that this is not going to be a typical year because our revenue picture is not going to be as clear as it normally is at this point. Slide, Michelle. With that in mind, the Forecast Group, which consists of myself, Town Administrator Tom Mayo, Assistant Town Administrator Michelle Montegor, Town Accountant Sue Nickerson, Superintendent Austin, Director of School Business Services John Ferris, School Committee Chair Carrie Nie, School Committee Member Michelle Ayer, Advisory Chair Bob Curley, and Advisory Chair, Advisory Committee Vice Chair Julie Straley. We meet on a monthly basis. And as we were looking at an approach to budgeting this year, we realized that it would be important to have a consistent approach because this is going to be a somewhat challenging year. In terms of our budget approach, both Town Administrator Mayo and Superintendent Austin are going to put together a budget that has two parts. Part one is what we call a level services or a status quo budget. Basically, the cost to provide the same services as this year. But instead of actuels, we're relying on the budget for FY '21. So, for example, we've had about approximately 300 children who have transferred to private school for this year because of the pandemic. For FY '22 budgeting purposes, we're assuming that they're all coming back because we think that that's appropriate to do. In addition to the level services, we will also be, the Town Administrator and Superintendent, but we'll be recommending what we're calling immediate needs. These are both ongoing needs as well as what we're calling kind of one-time catch-up. And I think it's important to note that some of these catch-up activities may have a duration of one year, but some of them might be longer. As we develop our budgets, we're always asking questions. What are our goals? How will we meet them? Are there more cost-effective ways to deliver services? Are there services that aren't needed? Are we applying direct budget reimbursements to the maximum extent possible? Are there any opportunities for fees or grants or additional stimulus? And an important thing that we think for FY '22 that we need to understand are any sort of one-time expenses that are a direct result of the pandemic or primarily of the pandemic. Slide, Michelle. So in terms of balancing the budget, we're going to compare the expense budgets to available revenue and see where we are. We need to understand whether the FY '22 revenues will support our budget requests. We're going to need to ask ourselves whether there are additional sources of revenue that we could use next year. Would we want to consider using fund balance in a similar fashion as we did for fiscal year 21? That's a question we need to ask. We also need to ask a question about the excess levy capacity. Should we levy to the full amount? Should we keep that money held aside to fund tax relief for our most vulnerable citizens? And we need to ask ourselves, do we need an override? If we need an override, what are the goals of an override? When would we do it? How much would we, how much would it be? How would override dollars be allocated between the town, between the schools, and for capital? And what will it be spent on? And most importantly, what's the taxpayer impact of a proposed override? Slide, please, Michelle. Slide, please, Michelle. Uh, Bob Curley asked us to talk a little bit about an override process. And, you know, you, you can get into a lot of the legalities pretty quickly, but, you know, the bird's eye view here is that an override requires a majority vote at town meeting and a majority ballot vote. And so at town meeting, a contingent appropriation is made. And then, and then there is a ballot vote that usually coincides with the town election. The legal authority to place a ballot on the, a, a question on the ballot rests with the Board of Selectmen. An override has to specify a dollar amount and a statement of purpose. And there are a lot of different ways to format an override. It can be one question. It can be multiple questions. It can be a menu. There's all different kinds of different considerations to do that. Um, I know the advisory committee, Bob, uh, you guys like kind of rules of thumb. Uh, you know, we say that for every ten million dollars in additional debt, excluded debt is about a hundred dollars to the average taxpayer. A million-dollar override would cause a tax bill, a property tax bill to increase by a hundred and eleven dollars. Again, on the average assessed value home, eight hundred seventy-seven thousand dollars. So hypothetically, if the town passed an override for a million dollars, if your house was assessed at less than eight hundred seventy-seven dollars, the increase would be less than a hundred eleven. Um, and again, I would point out that a, an override is a permanent tax increase, and it's on top of the two and a half percent that already happens as part of Prop two and a half. Um, slide, Michelle. This is just an example. The last time Hingham did an override was in two thousand nine to open East School. And on the top of the slide, you see, this is just a picture taken out of the warrant. So when the town voted on the Article Six Budget, there was a, um, an additional amount in the total, that totaled one point one million dollars that was voted by the town. When the Article Six Budget came up, um, the school budget was held. An explanation was given to the citizens of the town who attended town meeting that the budget included an override amount, a description of what it was for. Town meeting in two thousand nine authorized, they voted in favor of the override. And then in the town election, there was a ballot vote, and you see the results of that in the bottom of the screen. Um, I've mentioned this to a few people because this is something that's been, uh, there've been some conversations about the, the question of an override in the lead-up and, and following our recent special town meeting. Hingham is not a community that, that does a lot of overrides. And, and I'm not saying that that's a good thing or a bad thing. I think that's everybody's opinion. Um, slide, Michelle. Since Proposition Two and a Half was enacted in, in nineteen seventy-five, Hingham has attempted eight overrides and passed four. And the total value of all four overrides was three point two million dollars. And, um, we noticed that there were two in nineteen ninety-two that failed for the same amount of money. And this information came from the Mass Department of Revenue. We're not sure if that was one override that was listed twice in their database or we tried it two times. Um, we, we didn't have an answer for that, but we didn't want to modify the information from the Department of Revenue. But what you'll see is that, um, is that since nineteen ninety-four, so in the last twenty-six years, three overrides have been passed for about two point two million dollars, and they've all been for school operating expenses. Slide, Michelle. This is a comparison that shows the overrides and debt exclusions for all of our benchmark communities. And so just as an example, if you look on the left-hand side, you'll see that Lexington has attempted nineteen overrides since nineteen eighty-eight. They've passed eighty-four percent of them, so almost all of them. And that the total value was eighteen point eight million dollars, so about a, about a million dollars for an override. So, you know, remember back when you saw those slides and you saw that Lexington's average property tax bill was a whole lot higher than Hingham. This is one of the reasons why. Um, if you look in general, you'll see that in some communities, for example, in Wellesley, um, they've tried twenty-two overrides and they've only passed half. Um, you have community like Needham that had, that attempted thirty overrides and they passed sixty percent. Um, I have a friend in Needham who says, yep, we, we do an override. We typically know that the first time we ask for an override, we'll get a no vote. So then we come back the next year and ask for it again. They kind of know that they're a fifty-fifty community. Um, on the right-hand side, you'll see the amount of money that has also been the result of a debt exclusion. And remember, a debt exclusion is a temporary tax increase, typically tied to a capital project. Um, Hingham has had debt exclusions for a number of projects, primarily school, um, for a total of about sixty, sixty-two million dollars. So, you know, the, the bottom line here, and again, I, I know that there's a lot of discussion about an override. We're just starting to discuss our financials right now. Hingham is not a community that does overrides all that often. And I think it's been my experience in, uh, i- in serving the town in both, uh, an advocacy role and, and in a policymaking role that, um, overrides are successful when we do a whole lot of analysis, when it is, um, based on programs and services. Um, but it's not something that we do all that often. So an override at any point in this community is a big deal. Um, where in other communities, it's something that people may expect every couple of years. That's not the case in Hingham. Slide, Michelle. Um, you know, there's been a lot of talk about these nineteen towns and the benchmark comparisons and, and external analysis to complement internal analysis. And we would suggest that a lot of these comparisons are indicators that don't necessarily drive to a conclusion, but help inform and focus analysis. Um, we would also suggest that per capita and per pupil comparisons are most meaningful when you have communities of similar size. And I, I think it's also important to not look at any one metric in isolation. Um, for example, again, Wellesley's average tax bill is fifty percent higher than Hingham. And somebody could say, well, we're, we're, we're under taxing people. Well, remember that, um, as a percentage of income, that fifteen thousand dollar tax bill is a smaller percentage of Wellesley income. So you kind of have to look at these things together. And you see some questions on the slide that, that I think are ones that we ask uh, with respect to benchmarking analysis. It's, it's not necessarily the numbers we want to look at, but we want to understand the underlying differences. Is it programs? Is it services? And mostly, how does that help? How do those differences result in, um, performance metrics for the town? Slide, Michelle. I'll give you two examples. Uh, this is just an example of Hingham with our benchmark communities in terms of sources of revenue. And, you know, this is the raw data, but what, you know, one of the things that we're talking about doing, uh, within, within the Selectmen's Office is doing some analysis to identify and compare fees and other non-tax sources of revenue for other communities. We're not necessarily going to conclude that Hingham should do something or shouldn't do something. But we might want to look and, for example, see if some of these communities have higher sources of revenue. Uh, for example, if you look at the little black, if you look at the black bars, um, you know, those are other sources of revenue. One of the things that, that's in there is a transfer station fee. You know, Hingham doesn't have a transfer station fee. Should we think about having a transfer station fee? These are the types of questions that we want to ask. We don't want to have this data drive conclusions. We want to help it, help it focus analysis. Slide, Michelle. Um, similarly with respect to per pupil, and I know there's been a lot of discussion of per pupil. Um, these are some highlights from two thousand eighteen, from, which is the last year that pu- per pupil expenditures are reported. Um, if you look, Hingham is in the center column. And what we did was we looked at communities of similar enrollment. So we looked at the two communities with higher enrollments than Hingham, that's Winchester and Wellesley. And we looked at the communities with the, uh, lowest enrollment compared to Hingham, and that's Milton and Canton. And, you know, I, I'm, I'm not going to go through all these different numbers, but the, the real value in looking at this, in my opinion, is being able to look and see where there are differences to guide the analysis. So for example, if we, if we look at Hingham, Hingham's administrative costs per pupil are three hundred and seventy-one dollars. And we look at Milton right to the left, and they're at about six hundred dollars. So to me, the question is, well, uh, what kind of an administrative staff is, is in place in Milton? How many people? What jobs are they doing? How much are they being paid? Um, are there services that the administration is offering that might be an opportunity for Hingham? When I think about doing a deep dive into per pupil expenditures, um, those are the types of questions that I think we want to understand. Um, and, and also, as we're looking at these differences, I think whether it's on the municipal side or on the school side, we want to, we want to tie it to departmental goals or performance. Um, slide, Michelle. So in terms of our budget next steps, um, the, but the Forecast Group has agreed on a budget approach. Over the next few months, we will be developing budgets and underlying analyses. We will be holding public budget hearings. The five-year forecast will be issued in late January at the earliest. Um, that will help drive budget decisions. Uh, right now, we don't have a good line of sight to the final timing on budgets because we still don't know when the FY twenty-two revenue forecast will be available and, um, and when it will be clear. Um, you know, in early January, one of the decisions that we will have to make as a town is whether it is advisable for us to go ahead with the town meetings scheduled at the end of April or in light of COVID, uh, would we want to defer it? Um, I think in, in the conversations we've had in the Forecast Group, uh, what we would like to try to do is to only develop one budget. We don't want to develop a budget, get a lot of new information, and have to do it all over again. Um, slide, Michelle. These are some actions that the town has taken to try to control taxes. Um, we've adopted a lot of property tax exemptions and tax work-off programs. Uh, we're constantly researching and pursuing grants and non-tax revenue streams. We've accumulated non-excluded debt capacity to make room in the operating budget for projects like the Plymouth River School Windows. Uh, we've been saving our excess fund balance to try to defray the taxpayer impact of capital projects like Foster School. Uh, we're trying to time our capital projects with the retirement of outstanding debt. And another important thing we're doing is maintaining our triple-A bond rating because that gives the town access to the lowest rates in the capital markets. And just as a frame of reference, when we issued a hundred and, you know, a hundred and twenty million dollars of debt uh, to purchase the Weir River Water System, the interest rate we got was two point one four five percent. So, you know, think about, think about the rate you have on your mortgage. That's pretty good. And, and that is really the power of the triple-A bond rating. And as we think about things like, um, borrowing money for Foster School, potentially borrowing money for other municipal projects, this triple-A bond rating gives us access to the markets, but also importantly, it, it affords us access at the lowest rates. Slide, Michelle. Um, Bob Curley had also asked a question about how, um, about town debt capacity. And, um, the town's legal debt margin is about three hundred million dollars. We have about sixty million dollars of outstanding debt, so we're, we'll run within our margin. The graph you see on the slide is our total debt service as compared to our financial policy. And the table at the bottom, uh, actually looks at our debt capacity against our financial policy. And we've laid in the debt service for a hundred million dollars of debt beginning in FY twenty-five at a conservative interest rate of three and a half percent. And when you do that, what will happen is that in the, in the first few years of that new debt being issued, not unlike what we saw in, in two thousand eleven and two thousand twelve, we will be in excess of our financial policy, but by FY thirty, we will be below the guideline. So the, the kind of quick answer to the question is that if the town were to borrow a hundred million dollars in fiscal year twenty twenty-five at an interest rate of three and a half percent, we would be within the financial policy guidelines. And from a bond rating perspective, um, that, that level of borrowing wouldn't raise any red flags. It would be very consistent with the pattern of debt service that we've seen uh, in the town's recent history. Um, slide, please, Michelle. So, you know, in, in summary, the, um, this is actually what you see on the slide here is the beginning of the financial policy, the town's financial policy that is set by the advisory committee. And, you know, our, our individual and collective responsibility and our challenge is to figure out how to balance all these things. Um, we want to make sure of, of a continuous delivery of town services that's consistent with what people expect. We want to make sure that people of varied economic means remain part of our community. We want to make sure that we can provide for the acquisition and maintenance of infrastructure. Um, we want to stabilize our tax rates and we want to preserve the town's credit rating. And just as in every year, the challenge that we will have for FY twenty-two is determining the balance of these things that considers and takes into account all twenty-three thousand residents within the town. Um, it's going to be a little more complicated this year because of COVID, um, which is all the more important that we have conversations like this one so that everybody is hearing the same information and we are all aware of all, all of the different considerations here. Um, I think at this point, and I know some people have, uh, joined since the beginning of this conversation, and we welcome you. Um, in terms of how we're gonna, how we're gonna do this, I'm gonna first uh, open it up to questions and comments from, uh, my colleagues on the Board of Selectmen. Uh, I'll then turn it over to Bob Curley for questions and comments from members of the advisory committee. And then to Carrie Nie for questions and comments from the school committee. And then following that, we will open it up to questions and comments from the public. Um, so with that, uh, Joe and Bill, uh, questions, comments?
Well, Mary, that's a, that's a tough act to follow. Um, your presentation was, uh, thorough, uh, educational and superb, so, so thank you. Um, I think, um, you know, I've had a chance to review this ahead of time, and I would like to, um, hold my questions until, uh, others have had a chance to, uh, to ask and participate. Thank you.
Bill?
Thank you for that, uh, presentation. I know you put a lot of work into it, and that was very helpful, particularly for me, as this is my first year going through the budget process. You know, one of the thing, one of the things I think we need to do, uh, during our discussion this year is look at, you know, where our needs lie. Um, and how are we going to fund those needs? I think we need to have that, see, very serious conversation with our school department or our school committee and see where they need assistance from us. Um, but also throughout the town. Um, you know, and I, just another comment, I liked the way that we used fund balance last year. And as we go through this process, I'd like to look at ways in which we can maximize the use of our fund balance while being mindful of our triple-A rating, but certainly looking forward to, uh, the discussion and, and moving along this year with the budget.
Thank you. Um, Bob, at this, at this point, I think I would, um, turn it over to you. Um, I might, uh, again, questions, comments from, uh, members of the advisory committee?
Well, thank you, Mary. I, I know that that presentation involved an enormous amount of thought, time, and work by you and the town's financial team. And to the extent that we gave you a skeleton of, uh, questions to answer, you put a lot of flesh on the, uh, on the bone, so, uh, thank you very much for that. I'll keep my comments, I think, rather brief. Um, I, I'd like to say as, as part of the Forecast Group that I think collectively to the Forecast, Forecast Group, that that I think collectively to the forecast group that this budget approach makes sense with our next annual town meeting being four to six months away, depending on what happens, and with a budget process that's starting a little later than the normal because of the pandemic and the needs to get everything ready for a town meeting. I I think the concept of addressing immediate needs this year in the operational budget through looking at all potential sources of revenues, but including the potential use of unrestricted fund balance, which we committed to last year because of pandemic issues, where $3.3 million was committed, and it looks like it won't need to be spent. But I I think that in terms of the time available to us makes sense. In in thinking about operational needs and a potential override down the road, I I do think it makes complete sense to do that in a data-driven way and the most thoughtful process possible. Where both the municipal and educational needs of the town that would be funded by an override would be specifically and thoughtfully enumerated so that the town would be persuaded that, yes, indeed, this is something that is important and we need to fund. And lastly, I'm I'm going to throw out one other thought on the maybe picking up a little from the end of the slide presentation about, and maybe both the beginning and end of the slide presentation, which are debt exclusions in the capital projects. We started out with the great news about Foster and Plymouth River. And we, of course, learned of the concerns at town at our special town meeting and before about the Foster School and and the need to fund that. We've also heard about the need to work collectively as a town with respect to the capital big picture down the road. And and one of those things is the public safety facility. We are having debt come off in the latter part of this decade. Our debt capacity is good. Our ability to borrow money at low rates is excellent. But in terms of decision-making, in terms of ultimately funding construction costs for a public safety facility, we need to have a good idea of what they would be. And that can only happen with a thoughtful and value-engineered design, a study process at this point. And that that piece of the puzzle is a major piece in terms of a senior center that cannot possibly be constructed until after the police move out of Town Hall. So I think we need to have a serious discussion about how we thoughtfully move the public safety facility discussion on, especially since we've had such good news about Foster and Plymouth River. And at at this point, I I think I've probably given my AdCom colleagues time to formulate the questions that they'd like to ask. And I'd invite anyone from the AdCom to dive right in.
Bob, I see that Evan Shan has his hand up.
Evan? Thanks. Thanks, Bob. Thanks, Mary, for the presentation. I don't have any real questions. I think there was a lot of material to digest there, and I appreciate the time that that the the team took in kind of putting it all together. But one of the things I want to key in on around what Bill Ramsey said, and then keying off what Bob said, is I don't see a way really in the near term where we balance and address what will be kind of a looming potential mental health crisis for our most vulnerable population, which I really see as kind of children and young adults in school, and not have an open, transparent discussion around what it's going to take to have an override to address the needs that we're going to see with with the last 15-plus months of kids kind of being left behind and how we address those needs moving kind of forward. I realize that there's some impacts also on the municipal side, but I do think we've had a few conversations on our AdCom meetings over the past month or so, and it's never really clear how we have these conversations and move them forward, so I think we need to do that as a community. And I know we recently went through the 2008-2009 crisis, the recession, but this is a bit different as we hopefully, you know, won't see another event like this over the next 100 years. But I do think the focus on addressing a whole group of kind of left behind young children and young adults is something that we, as a community, have a moral obligation to do. So I'd like to see us begin to have that conversation a little bit more openly and transparently, and and I did listen on the school committee meeting last night, and with a little bit of kind of mutual respect on both sides, I think, that everybody needs to have as we do this. So then the last thing I'll say is while I'm thrilled with the MSBA announcements, I think, you know, realizing in 2015 or so that Foster School needs to be replaced and and potentially having classrooms filled with students in a new school or renovated school in in 2024 is is discouraging to me that it would take us that long to do something like that. So we we tend to move at a glacial pace, and the world's moving a bit faster. And I think we, as a community, need to take a look at how we address these things with a little bit more flexibility and speed. That's all I have to say.
Bob, I see Dave Anderson has a hand up.
Dave, please proceed.
Hi, Mary. Thanks so much for that presentation. I agree. I thought it was excellent. I I'll just throw in my two cents, I mean, mostly as a citizen and then partly as a member of the AdCom Education Subcommittee. So I mean, I'm glad that the conversation, that at least the override word is out there now, and I think it's an important one to talk about. I think that this I think this presentation is super helpful for setting the context about the constraints and the considerations that we have to think through as we're thinking about something like this. But, you know, the the counterpoint, and I know this wasn't set up as an either-or, but the counterpoint is the excellent presentation that we heard from Dr. Austin last year, laying out the tiers and laying out the needs and weighing out the costs, the kind of but costs that don't appear on a budget of not doing certain things in an education budget. So I mean, I'm torn. I've I've said this to the school committee over the last couple of years, that the ACES Committee and even AdCom is powerless to wave a magic wand and create a bigger budget. And, you know, that's why we're having the beginning of this conversation tonight. But I I it would help me just to understand, because I wasn't a part of AdCom at the time of the last override. But I'm just kind of curious if someone, anybody who could, could weigh out just for me the general timeline, like, for example, in the context of the East School override, how does that make its way to, as I understand, the Selectmen have to put it forward as the they are the only body that can put an override question before the town? You know, how does it get there? Does it get there from a school committee vote in the case of a school override, but in the case of an override that involves the entire town? I'm a little bit uncertain about how all of those resources get marshaled and how those conversations about how an override would be allocated across departments, how that all starts to come together. And I I don't need a definitive answer, just general kind of guideposts, if anybody has them.
Dave, I I noticed that there, you know, there may be some others on the line who can answer this with more specificity. I think it starts with the forecast group because the forecast group looks at revenue. And you have, you know, you have the town finance team, you have town and school administration, you have the Board of Selectmen, the school committee, and the advisory committee, and the discussion about a consensus sort of override amount. It was my impression that back in 2009 that that the forecast group achieved consensus and that 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 helped drive the community's support. That's kind of the short answer.
Other questions and comments from members of the advisory committee?
Bob, I see Al McDonald has a hand up.
No, please proceed.
There we go. I'm muted. I I just want to just quickly clarify the the slide, if I could, on on page 26. Oh, am I unmuted? Am I unmuted?
I can hear you.
Oh, sorry, it's I just had. So the the graph on 26 on debt capacity, just to clear, what I think I'm looking at, the the chart says that essentially we are where we're we want to be relative to our guideline for debt capacity, but then as theoretically revenue grows and debt slides off going forward, that creates some capacity. But then the table below says that if we, in '25, borrowed 100 million, we go up over what that annual debt service guideline would be for five years, but then maybe that could be mitigated by using the reserve balance?
Yep. Yeah, that's correct. So the the graph essentially shows all of the committed debt that the town has already. So that's that's debt that Town Meeting has previously authorized. And the reason that it drops every year is both because we have debt that's retiring and because the way the town structures debt, we do a a level principal debt, so the debt service payment in each year is a little bit lower. The blue line represents the town financial policy. And you're correct that if in FY25 we added $100 million of debt, that 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 red line would go up above the blue line for a couple of years. But by '29 or '30, it would again be below the blue line. And from the rating agency's perspective, they expect municipalities to be above the line in some years and below the lines in others. What's important to them is, first of all, that a town has a debt policy. Secondly, that projects are evaluated within the context of how they affect it. And thirdly, to the extent that that the town's debt debt service is above their financial policy, that there is a plan to get below it. So if you looked at this particular graph over Hingham's history for 30 or 40 years, you're going to see, you're you're going to see a lot of above the line, below the line because typically when you issue debt, it's for a large amount of money, but but your your interpretation is accurate.
And again, it could be further mitigated by
To the extent Al, if you look in the appendix, you'll see a couple of charts that show the impact of, for example, if if we use some of our excess fund balance, you know, we can apply that to the debt service payment, which could mitigate the impact, and there are a couple of different ways we could do that. The the other thing that I would say is there's also interest rate sensitivity. We're using a very conservative 3.5% interest rate. So again, slide 26 does not take into account using excess fund balance or interest rate sensitivity, but it is the worst case. And I think the conclusion is that from the rating agency's perspective, again, they wouldn't be alarmed if we issued that amount of debt at that time.
Any further comments?
See a hand from Victor?
Victor, please proceed.
I get unmuted there. So, Mary or or anyone in the forecast team, how how do you envision this proceeding? Because what I mean, usually, we come up with the budgets. We have the various budget hearings. We have a forecast. Then some like late January, February, we get another forecast. We realize we have to cut everything or or be or look for other revenue. This year, where we've had discussions override Evan's point on focusing on the needs of the most vulnerable students or any needs of other town departments, how do you see the timing of developing those, well, the costs of those needs at this, when we're having this delayed forecast, you know, on the revenue side?
Um, so Victor, it's it's a it's a good question. You know, essentially, right now, the focus is on building building the expense budgets. We think we know what the status quo budgets might look like, and we think that we have a pretty good handle on what we're calling some of the immediate needs. And and so we're going to be building those expense budgets with an eye towards needs and less about available revenue. And, you know, those budgets will be built, and we're going to start reviewing those in in January, as we typically do. And then in 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 late January, we will probably get a first look at revenue, and that's going to give us an indication of of how much our revenue, how much in expenses our revenue will support. And at that point, we're going to have to make some decisions with respect to, you know, potentially using excess, you know, using excess fund balance, the levy capacity, and the question of an override. If the state budget comes in late and thinking about the implementation of the COVID vaccine, as Tom laid out in the COVID in the COVID-19 report, a determination we're going to need to make in January is whether we go ahead with the town meeting at the end of April. And if we don't do that, we might potentially need to, you know, the budget process may go on beyond the normal time it does, which is early March. We may, for example, want to take up Warren articles before we finalize the budget. The uncertainty of the state revenue forecast of the state budget will drive timing and decisions. But to your point, it's going to be very tricky this year.
Does, and this is probably more of a question for the well, I'm sure it is more of a question for the school committee or administration. In in terms of, you know, as Dave pointed out, last year, Dr. Austin provided the actually four or five categories of various needs. So those were all spelled out and itemized and and what have you. Is there a similar undertaking possible or being done to determine what needs to be done? As you were saying, catch-up, so to get students back up to speed. I mean, is that is that analysis going on, and is that something that can be quantified?
Yeah. Dr. Austin, could could you maybe chime in here to answer Victor's question?
Thank you. I couldn't seem to get unmuted. Thank you very much, and good evening, everyone. That's a great question, and and Victor, we are just beginning that process right now. I have Dr. Luvil on that process of working with our administrators, our directors, et cetera, and we're beginning the process of assessing just how how much of a gap there is. We're going to be using multiple points of data to be able to do that. It will be a data-driven process for both academic and social-emotional help, and I and I suspect we'll be able to to start to give that picture early January or mid-January. So so we're just beginning that process right now, but the quick answer is absolutely, we're going to do that. And we're going to be making a very deep dive into the performance of our students in comparison to the past years, past performance, et cetera. So so, yes, that process is starting.
Bob, I see Andy McElhenney has a hand up.
You know, Mary, I don't know how you find these peoples more so much faster than I I'm I'm screening through I'm screening through four different screens to find people.
It's popping up to the top on mine.
Andy, please proceed.
I have two brief questions. The first regard regarding the due date for Warren Articles, which currently is January 20, I believe. Is there any plan afoot to move that back?
Tom, do you want to answer that question?
Sure. Thank you for the question, Andy. We did reach out with Town Council and ask that question. And unfortunately, that that date cannot be moved despite any allowance by the state government or the Governor's Office to move Town Meeting. The January 20th date is a local bylaw and can't be moved.
Okay. That, that's probably worth highlighting on the Town website. I know I, for one, thought if we moved the Town Meeting, we could probably move the date for submission of Warren Articles. But I'm glad to hear what the answer is. Don't like the answer, but I'm glad that there's an answer. And my second question, I guess, is one I should have asked last night of the School Committee meeting. But in the, I'll ask it with everyone's forgiveness tonight. Because it could be a significant expense item. Is there any discussion in the School Committee of summer sessions? To make up for some of the missed lessons for our students?
Dr. Austin?
Thank you. I'll keep myself off mute then. I'll just be quiet after this. Yeah, that's a question, a very good question. We have not begun those conversations yet. Again, that'll be driven by the analysis. The gaps that we need to make up and what the depth of that analysis is and how we go about overcoming those gaps. We haven't had those yet. That will, again, be coming probably mid to late January.
Bob, I see George Dennis has a hand.
George Dennis, please proceed.
Thank you. Thank you, Mary. A great presentation. Just, I don't want to forget the Town side in all of this. Dr. Austin did, you know, as has been mentioned, did a great job last year of laying out some of the needs that the schools had. And I'm wondering if a similar analysis has been done on the Town side. And really, I'm looking at a 2.6% annual increase in the budget, Mary, from your charts dating from 2014 going forward. And I'm wondering if on that kind of an increase, the town is able to provide the level of services that the citizens are expecting. And not only provide those, that level of services, but are there additional opportunities for things that the town could be providing to its citizens? That have not been fully explored because the resources and the funding has not been available. We do, as you know, on the annual budgets. Each department head provides additional expenses. And in my experience is that they always have, have good explanations, justifiable explanations for additional programs or staffing. And as the budget rolls through, if the forecast is not as favorable perhaps as hoped for, those expenses end up getting cut. So, I'm just concerned from cumulative effect. I agree that the schools have, have some very dramatic needs that have been very well put forward. But I also wondered about the municipal departments and how we're doing there.
Tom Mayo, do you want to address George's question?
Very happy to. Thank you very much, George. Yes, the, as AdCon members are aware, and you know, Mary touched on this in her presentation. There are regular and several structural deficits built into the town's budget every year. You know, you've heard me talk about the capital funding for the entire town is as a structural deficit for the last couple of years running. I think you've heard myself and Dr. Austin speak to some, some staffing shortages, dramatic staffing shortages in both of our organizations. I think there are opportunities, George, to, to, to improve the level of services that the town can provide from an educational standpoint, as well as a general government standpoint. Those need to be fully fleshed out and analyzed. But I think that's, that's what you're hearing from both Dr. Austin and myself.
And George, we've asked, we've asked Tom and Michelle and Sue Nickerson to incorporate some of that, again, into the development of the municipal budget. So, you know, you'll get, you'll get a level services budget, but then you will also get immediate needs from the municipal departments. That that also have been recommended by, by Tom and Michelle. Bob, I don't see any other AdCon hands. Would it be all right with you if I turned it over to Carrie Nie for questions and comments from members of the School Committee? And then I do note and thank you to members of the public for being patient. I see that those hands are up too. Bob, Bob, are you good for me to move on to Carrie?
Absolutely. Thank you, Mary.
Okay. Carrie? I noticed, I think a couple of your members have hands up if you can't see them.
Yeah, I see them. Thank you. Thank you for that presentation. Michelle Eyre?
Thank you. This is more, maybe a little more of a forecasting comment than just a comment necessarily about the School Committee budget. But I think it sort of ties in. So, it sort of dawned on me when Evan was talking. And then it, as Victor made his comments, I was thinking about some of the ways we do the process. And I'm thinking that something that we should focus on this year is trying to make the process, the budget process amongst all the town departments more collaborative versus so siloed. Right? Like, this is my pie and that's your pie. And I don't, you know, because I do think we have a lot of cross functions that we could be benefiting from. Evan made me think of it because I was actually going to talk with someone in the Town side about this. The schools are focused on the social emotional needs of our students. We know there are other community members who are struggling as well. And we have a town social worker. And are there ways that we can pull that town social worker in with our counseling staff to help provide services to more folks in town? I think of things like the country club pool. I'm sure that the schools could use a pool too, you know? I mean, I think there's transportation synergies you could come up with. There's probably technology synergies. So, I'm just wondering if this year, we could consider, you know, just some sort of collaborative approach to some of these budget items. And I think Mary, you pointed out very well in your, in your presentation, that there are some things that, you know, we just need to relook at with fresh eyes and think, is this a way we could do this better? Is there a way we could look at it differently? And maybe bringing the departments together, we could suss some of those things out.
Thank you, Michelle. Libby Lukey?
Hi. Yeah, I am so excited to be having this conversation. I can't tell you how different it feels from two and a half years ago when I started on the School Committee. And I was asking about and noticing that, you know, we're underfunded, we're underfunded, we're underfunded, we need more money, we need more money, we need more money. Oh, you're not going to get it, you're not going to get it, you're not going to get it. And how disappointing and depleting that was overall and how frustrating and, you know, most level funded. Most level funded. And I'd be like, well, what about an override? And it would be like, don't talk about that, don't say that word. And here we are, talking about it. And, you know, I mean, it's not like, I want to increase taxes, yahoo. But what it means, the fact that we're having this conversation, is that what it recognizes is the fact that we're underfunded. It's like, yes, we all see it now. It's like, okay, what are we going to do about it? What's the solution? And that the solution is more money, like, we need more money. And so, where are we going to find that money? And it's not going to come from traditional places. I mean, you know, we've been dithering and doddering over the decades for too long and we need a quick infusion. And, you know, this is the year, this is a pivotal year for Hingham. And it's so exciting to be able to say, we have this huge fund balance that we can take advantage of. We have some excess levy and we even have room for an override if that becomes necessary. And I thank you, thank you all so much for getting to this point. This is a huge beginning for us. It's a school, and I'm talking specifically about the schools, but it's also obviously true for all of the other services that are in Hingham as well. But, you know, the schools, it's an equity issue, the fact that we've been underfunded. And, you know, I mean, our Hingham performs very well on tough schools. But that's because a lot of the families can actually supplement. But a lot of families can't. And, you know, that's not fair. It's just not fair. And so, if when we, when we do fully fund the schools, then it will be fair. And all of our students will have an opportunity to tough well and do well and succeed at the best of their abilities. So, that's just also really exciting. I have a million questions that I'm just not going to go into now because I, like I said, I do have a lot of questions. But I wanted to also echo what Evan Sheehan and Michelle Eyre both just touched on as well. The social emotional impact of this pandemic is being laid at the feet of the Hingham Public Schools. And we can't do it. We just simply can't meet the needs of the community. And the, the community needs to step up and stop blaming the schools. Because people are anxious and upset and frustrated by a terrible, terrible situation. You know, it's just not fair to our administrators and our teachers and our volunteers. So, the town needs to pay attention to that. That people need to, to, yes, the schools can help. Yes, we, and we are helping, trying to help. And we do have excellent counselors that are up to ready. And, you know, but the need, more needs are out there and the town needs to take serious consideration of that. So that we can, you know, give the schools some room to actually teach academic. So, thank you very much for listening. And I hope I do have an opportunity to ask my questions at some point, but I'll leave it at that for now. Thank you. Again, thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Libby. Liza?
Hi, thank you very much. Couple of things. Thank you for the presentation. First of all, it was very good news to hear that we will be able to use the CARES money reimbursement through 2021. That we don't have to give up those funds because the schools definitely will still have costs involved with the COVID pandemic. And I'm certain that the town will as well. So, that is very good news. Second, thank you for letting us have this, start this conversation about overrides. Prop 2.5 was designed to allow for overrides. And one of the things I, I also appreciate letting us consider immediate needs using fund balance or other available funds. But I think we should also consider thinking about these overrides in the context of more of a long-term future. You know, the schools have laid out some needs, but we are embarking on a strategic plan. And there may be plans in the future that we see of how we want education to be and not just filling immediate gaps that we have. And on the others, on the Town side, I am a member of the Master Plan Committee. And there's three others, I believe, on this call, on fellow Master Plan Committee members. And on February 1st, that plan is to be presented to the Planning Board. And that plan identifies many, most of it is the town, town needs. That, and needs and opportunities for the town and investments. And also ways of how departments can collaborate together to both schools and multiple town departments to deliver services to the town. And I think we need to look at that plan to guide us on, you know, I hate to say it, but I'm not, I don't hate to say it. We may need to stage several overrides to consider, you know, if we have a 10-year master plan for the town, a five-year master plan for the schools. Where are we going in the future? Maybe we get new development because of the master plan. That can help fund things. But we need to plan to grow that, you know, for that growth in the town, which can be delivered through that plan. So, I'd like us to think about a little longer than just next year as we're considering any of these overrides. And lastly, I'd just like also to thank Tom and Michelle for the gravity of your COVID report earlier in the meeting before we started this. We are in a serious situation. And last night at our School Committee meeting, we talked about, we need to get the rates down in town to get more kids in person in schools. So, thank you for your cooperation on that. And I hope everyone on this call takes it seriously. And shares with your friends and neighbors that we really need to tackle this in Hingham for our own health and for the kids. So, thank you for that. But that's all I had.
Thank you, Liza. Ness Grunty?
Okay, Ma'am?
Yep.
Mary, I have to thank you so much for your awesome presentation. I love data. So, I'm going to digest it. One thing I'm wondering if we can look at is benchmarking our student-to-teacher ratios against other towns. To see if, if we can see any trends, whether we have a higher student-to-teacher ratio than other towns as the rumor mill is, is saying. And I only wondered that because we know that we, we run lean. And we're able to do that because we have amazing teachers. But as the pandemic is forging ahead, the teachers are tired. They're worn out. They have three jobs that they're trying to do in one. And the kids are, you know, we're not able to get them in full-time. We don't have the space. We don't have, we can't space them out to the number of teachers that we have. And that's part of the issue. And then we just don't have the physical space to the extent that we could use town space. That would be lovely. But it, you know, I foresee that being an issue. And even, I know people are going to cringe, but thinking about September. We may all be vaccinated, but we don't know whether the children are going to be able to be vaccinated. And what does that look like for education? And how is that going to change anything? So, I appreciate the thoughtfulness of letting the data drive our decisions. But the students are only students for a short amount of time. We are losing the opportunity to educate them. And there is a, you know, we're in the middle of a pandemic and there's a crisis going on and they're suffering. And I know that we can catch them up educationally, but we need to, we need to capture their mental health right now and making sure that they are going to be able to learn when we get back in the classroom full-time. That's all I have.
Yeah. So, to your point, Ness, Dr. Austin did do some analysis into the, the class sizes and with the teachers too that we, and this, Mary's presentation is really helpful. As far as when we have these conversations in the budget process going forward. Because we can, we can, we can really get granular with it if it would help people understand. And I agree with your point too. The kids are only in school for, that's, that's the hard thing, right? They're only in school from kindergarten through 12th grade. So, that makes it challenging. Jen Benner?
It won't, I mean, is it working? Okay, sorry. It wasn't showing up. I apologize. I appreciate all the time and effort that went into this presentation. I just want to say that. And I also want to say that as we go through this process and as we move forward as a community. We continue to have these conversations by looking at the data to discuss the needs of our children in our town. During and after the pandemic. I certainly appreciate nice conversations we're having. And I look forward to more conversations about helping our town to work with, helping the needs of our children during and after a pandemic. Thank you.
Thank you, Jen. Carlos?
Thank you, everyone. I'm not going to be repetitive. Great presentation. Thank you, Mary. And it is great that between the AdCon Board of Selectment and the School Committee, we are working collectively on behalf of our community. I just wanted to piggyback on certain things that were said. on behalf of our community. Um, I just wanted to piggyback on certain things that were said. Uh, specifically, uh, we were allowed, uh, you know, to allocate $3.9 million. My understanding, we did not have to use for, use it, uh, because we had revenue coming from other sources. Um, mainly, you know, the K Act and other areas. Um, Mary did mention that, uh, you need them, you know, it took them two tries to get an override. Um, you know, I like to utilize examples like that. Uh, and more specifically, it took us three tries to get uh, MSBA money for foster. Um, we've been patient. Uh, this shows to the, to the community overall that we are fiscally responsible and we don't take advantage, uh, you know, of taxpayers. Um, having said that, I would respectfully ask, uh, the three bodies involved to do whatever we can to push, um, whatever we need to do, whether we need to do an override uh, and identify exactly what the projects are and the amount, uh, that we do that sooner rather than later. Uh, and uh, you know, to Evan's point, I mean, it is too bad that we are waiting six years to perhaps see a foster school. But I do understand also that, you know, free money is free money and sometimes patience pays off. So I'm not going to complain about that, but I moved to this town because of the education system. Uh, and I'm willing to do whatever I can from my own perspective to help subsidize whatever cost that there is out there. Um, so let's, let's do whatever we can and uh, that's pretty much what I want to say. Let's continue working collectively. Uh, let's make sure that we are one in 21, like uh, Liza's presentation last night. Uh, and I will, just wanted to say I appreciate everything that everyone is doing. We are all volunteers. Thank you.
Thank you, Carlos. Um, and I, I just, I agree with you. I think most of us move to town for the education and um, um, and I want to thank Mary for the presentation. This is going to be very helpful for us as we prepare the budget presentations going forward. Um, and I agree with you that um, it should be driven by the needs of the community. I just want to, just let everyone on the call know that these, the catch-up needs may take many years going forward. There's a lot of damage that was done. Um, and is being done over the COVID period and it's not anyone's fault. It's just, it's, we're in a pandemic. And so we have to, we have to think about that as we go forward that this may be a, a longer term thing than just a one-year thing. Um, and then I wanted to also let everyone on the call know that we are working on a deep dive, apples-to-apples comparison of the benchmark towns. I think it's good information for us to have and we can also, in the process, look at the different services. I know Dr. Austin has done some of that already. He looked at the class sizes and some of the administrative structures of our benchmark towns. That's helpful for us going forward. Um, as we figure out, we're, we're really going to have to rebuild and we're going to have to do it as quickly as possible um, for, for the kids because they only have a certain number of years in school. Um, so that's all I see from the school committee and I just want to thank you again.
Thank you. Um, before I um, open it up to, to members of the public, um, just a, a, a couple of things, you know, um, Bill and Joe and I, um, we heard in the lead-up to the special town meeting, we heard at the town meeting and we heard following the town meeting that there are many of our fellow citizens who believe that uh, it is time for the town to consider the possibility of an override. And we believe that part of our job is to have the conversations that are important to the community. And, and that's what we're starting here. And this is the start of a lot of conversation. Um, I would just say for me personally, and I've, I've said this to a few people who are on this call, I don't really know where this is going because of all the uncertainty around COVID. Um, but, but we're going to have this conversation. We're gonna, you know, we're going to base it on data. We're going to see how this goes. This is going to happen in public meetings. And you know, I, I would just, so I, I would just say that, you know, the fact that we're having these conversations, I, I don't want anybody to think, you know, I'm, I'm not going to speak for the advisory committee or the school committee, but you know, the Board of Selectmen, we, we, we're not even in a place where we can say, this is a good idea right now. Or this is a good idea and here's how much. We're, we're putting it on the table. We're going to have the conversation and we're going to see how it goes. I, I would just also remind us all that, that while there is a lot of enthusiasm on this call and I've seen enthusiasm on other calls, this is a community that, that doesn't typically kind of do overrides. And again, that's not to say we don't do it, but there are some fundamental questions that we have to be able to answer and, and that's all of us, like staff and volunteers. Because basically what we're saying to people is, can we raise your taxes forever? And you know, different people experiencing Hingham in different ways. Um, only 25% of Hingham households have children in the school system. And while I think we can all agree that a strong school system benefits our whole community, we have people in our community who, um, you know, just the, the two and a half percent that, that naturally comes can be difficult. So as a community, we have to be prepared to answer questions for people. They're going to say, well, you know, I'm, I'm giving you a town of Hingham, 100, you're getting $108 million. You need to prove to me that you're spending that $108 million wisely, right? Before I give you more money, you got to show me if you're spending that well. And, and, and we have to all work together on that. We all got to work together on justifying that. And then they're going to say, okay, I, I get that you're spending my money wisely, but is, you know, convince me that raising my taxes is the last resort. Tell me that you've pursued grant opportunities. Tell me that you've exhausted your revolving funds. Tell me that you've looked at all these other things and that, and that I'm your last resort. And, and we're going to, again, we're going to have to make our case to people because we're asking them to raise their taxes permanently. And then they're going to say, well, well, what do you need it for? What do you need it for? And, and actually, I think we're pretty good at making that case. I think we're pretty good. But then the other part they're going to want to say is, well, okay, tell me how that translates to a better community, whether it's in student performance or something else. We have to translate it because, you know, saying that we're going to spend more money and we're going to do these things, it's got to translate into some results. And I think in particular, when it comes to education, there are a lot of great metrics that are out there about student performance, about cohorts that are being left behind. What we have to do is connect the programs and the services to those particular outcomes. And, and that's what it's going to take to kind of convince people. And I, I'd say one last thing, which is that, you know, it's, as I said, it's a, it's a majority vote at town meeting and it's a majority vote at the ballot box. Um, it's not a slam dunk. So, so there's a lot of work to be done and, and I'll be honest and say that in, in some ways, I agree with the idea that this is the right time to do it. By the same token, I know how hard everybody is working right now on trying to educate and provide services to people during these very challenging times. And I think we all, all of us, town staff, town volunteers, advocates, interested citizens, we are signing up to a lot of work here that we got to do together. And, and again, the, I hope everybody is taking from this, that the Board of Selectmen is not going to shy away from having this conversation. Um, but, but this is going to take a significant collective effort because this is a big deal in Hingham. And people who are not involved in the budget process will look and say, $100 million. Uh, sure, surely that's enough money. So we're, we're going to, we're going to have to talk to people about how to do that. Um, okay, so I see some hands up. So here's what I'm going to ask. Um, if, when I recognize you, if you could please give your name and address for the record. If you could please direct, uh, questions and comments to the chair and um, uh, Priya, I, I know that you've had your hand up for quite a while. So, uh, Priya Howell, I'll, I'll recognize you first. Welcome.
Thank you, Mary. Um, Priya Howell, 26 Del Pret. Um, you know, as always, Mary, I thank you for giving so much of your time to the town. I can tell that there was a lot of time spent on this presentation. Um, and it was, you know, really informative. But as I, I listened to this entire meeting, I hear people saying that they are happy that we are finally saying the word override. Um, but when I hear you frame it by saying that most importantly, we need to look at the impact of an override on the taxpayer, I have to respectfully say that that is just the wrong question. The most important question we need to ask ourselves is, what is the impact of doing nothing on the children growing up calling Hingham their home? How are we going to help our children recover from this pandemic and how will we support our schools so they can prepare our children? Um, you know, for what is really an increasingly competitive world. You also mentioned that we need to look at other sources of funding such as, can we get grants? But um, as I said at the special town meeting, I just don't feel that we have the time to look under every couch cushion here. And that's why just saying the word override is not enough. Instead of discussing, can we do an override? Is it a good idea? Where else can we get funds? We need to be discussing, how do we get this override done as quickly as possible? And you know, I hear what you're saying about how for some families, um, you know, an increase of two and a half percent is a lot. Uh, you know, we haven't been levying up to that full two and a half percent for years. So that's, you know, and it's something that they have benefited from. And, and these are property taxes that we're talking about. They're based on the value of your home. So if your house is worth $500,000, it, your assessment is not going to be, you know, at, going up as much as the people whose houses um, are worth $2 or $3 million or even more. And we know that there are a lot of houses in Hingham that are worth more. So you know, this may be a big deal in Hingham, but it needs to be done. And I just felt that I had to, you know, pipe up and say that it's, it's not enough just to be talking about it. We need to get it done.
Well, um, thank you. The fact that we are talking about it and doing some work, I think is indication that you're seeing a commitment from people to want to do something. Um, I, I gotta say, um, I'm speechless. Um, I'm going to recognize Sue Garland.
Hi, Mary. Um, Sue Garland, 18, Maryneal Drive. Um, thank you so much for that presentation tonight, Mary, and um, thank you for the time you spent on the phone with me the other day. Um, very informative. Um, you know, as I'm kind of new to this world, um, of, I guess, town politics. Um, it, it was really eye-opening. Um, but what I wanted to address was one of the comments you made during your slides about um, how Hingham is spending, I think you said, 2% more of our budget on schools than other towns. Um, and I just wanted to be clear that this goes back to what Priya had mentioned, I think, at town meeting. So we have to think about the whole size of the pie, right? So we have a smaller pie than those other towns. So we might be spending more of our budget, but we're still spending less on our schools. Um, and that's, that's exactly where I was, you know, when I spoke at town meeting and I read that letter signed, um, by over 900 parents in town, we are all in support for an override. So you know, the fact that we got that many people to show up at town meeting in the middle of a pandemic just shows you how much support there is in town for an override. Um, so you know, we are prepared to put in the work and do, do the hard work and make it happen. Um, so I just, I, I, I know you, you have more experience at this than I do and you say Hingham is not an override town. Um, but I think maybe it needs to be one. That's it. Thanks.
Thank you. Um, I'm going to recognize, uh, Clem, excuse me, Kim Flygirl. Could you please give your name and address for the record?
Yes, Kim Latell, 12 Highfield Road. Sorry, it came in through my uh, work information. I would like to say thank you to the volunteers who are taking a lot of their time because sometimes I think people that do put themselves out there suddenly feel personally attacked or underappreciated for the work they do. And so I thank you for that, even though I do have some differences of viewpoint. I've only lived here four years. I paid a fortune for a very small house for children in the school system. I've been shocked that the funding or funding amounts or conditions of the schools um, in this town actually for the reputation of um, the education and the value of it to start with. And um, secondly, time is the enemy of indecision. And so um, I would like to direct a question to Dr. Austin when he talks about continuing to gather data for the mental and social stability of our children. Scientifically, it's proven and we could provide many papers. I'm sure many parents would be happy to send Dr. Austin statements as such and papers as such that this situation is a detriment to our children. To have them basically only linked by uh, Zoom and um, by themselves in their rooms per se, with parents doing the best they can, trying to work, be out of town and be the social worker, homeschooler, wear all those hats. And it's a losing battle for us that the system is putting on the parents. I understand completely that it's difficult for administrators and for professionals, for teachers, for parents, for everyone. We're asking a lot out of everyone. But is it going to take to see a shocking suicide in the paper with our town labeled on it? Is it going to take all those things for the data? So Dr. Austin, I would like to ask you, you're collecting data through January and we all know this is a detriment to our children. What information are you, oh, are you hoping to get statistics? Because parents, I'm sure can send you information on their condition of their children right now.
Um, thank you for the question. Dr. Austin, just before, before you answer and I, I apologize. I um, I, I think this question was asked within the context of the budget process and um, Dr. Austin, if you could please answer in that way, I, I, I see the potential that we could get into another conversation that may be an important conversation to have, but I'm, I'm not sure that, that it's within the context of this discussion. Please go ahead. Thank you.
Yeah, I'll answer that context. Um, yeah, that's exactly what the question was as far as putting the budget together and putting that information together. Um, we've been collecting data all year long and we will continue to collect data. Uh, that was discussed last night at length in our school committee meeting. We will put that together as far as uh, putting the budget together and why um, we're going to propose certain uh, supports and interventions uh, in the budget process.
Thank you very much. Um, I'd like to recognize Susan O'Horo.
Hi, I'm not going to take up every, Susan O'Horo, 7 Wanderstrife. I'm not going to take up everyone's time by echoing all the thanks that um, Priya and Sue Garland have already mentioned as well. Um, but just to kind of shift gears for a second, you know, as a parent who's really seeing the schools progressively defunded and the consequences of the austerity measures that were imposed upon our kids uh, and that we have the lowest level of in-person learning than almost every other school district, I can just say that there needs to be, the needs-based budget for the schools needs to be met. And as a, you know, aside from the supporters of Hingham Public Schools personally, I will not vote for any more funding for the emergency center, the senior center, until the needs of our kids are met. The kids are our future of this town. And if this is more than just foster, this is more than just windows. This is about getting our kids the resources they need. And I think Kim is completely right. What is it going to take? Is it going to take a suicide? It, what is it going to take to get the kids the resources they need in this town? This is completely ridiculous. They need, the schools need the money to, to do with the jobs that they need to do. They're not, you know, there's no bells and whistles here. This is needs. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Um, I'd like to recognize Christine Smith. Uh, Christine, I think you need to unmute. There you go.
Hi, everyone. Uh, thank you. Uh, Christine Smith, Two Park Circle, former school committee member, um, former president, chair of the Friends of Hingham Public Schools. I was actually the chair of the school committee back in 2008 and 2009 when the bottom fell out. And just kind of wanted to address some of the, um, the budget things that Mary has, um, has spoken about. And one thing Mary didn't tell you is Mary was also very involved in the Friends of Hingham Public Schools and was instrumental in passing both operational and debt exclusion override. and was instrumental in passing both operational and debt exclusion overrides. So she's always been a strong supporter of the schools and a person who knows how to get things done. As I think everyone can attest to with both her, you know, financial acumen and her presentation skills. Back in 2009, just to give people a little bit of context, the bottom of the economy fell out. And that was the year that the town decided that they had to fund OPEB, other post-employment benefits to the tune of, I think the number was $895,000. It was close to, it was, it was, it was close to $1 million. And what people might not realize is in that same year, because of that, we actually had to pink slip 46 teachers, 46 teaching positions were being eliminated as part of the budget. And that was very difficult, very difficult. In the end, not many people lost their jobs. But this was being done in conjunction with an override. And when you think about that, the reason that the budget for that operational budget went from 2.2 million to 1.1 million is we realized that there was only so much that the budget could handle in terms of taxpayers supporting that budget. Which is, might be surprising to a lot of people because people do move to Hingham for education. But one of the things that really stuck with people, and we're talking a lot about having conversations. But when I say granular work needs to be done, someone pointed out to me at the time, and I'm just going to use general numbers. Let's say the average family in Hingham has three kids that go to Hingham Public Schools. And it costs $10,000 a year for each child to go to school. So that's $30,000 a year that you're pulling out just for educational services. And your kids go to school from kindergarten through 12th grade. So that's 13 years. So if I did my math correctly, $10,000 a year times three kids a year is $30,000 a year. Times 13 years is $390,000 that you're pulling out. And I think the number that I heard socialized was that the average taxpayer in Hingham pays $10,000 a year in taxes. And so if you take $10,000 a year times 13 years, that's $130,000 that you've contributed, but you've pulled out $390,000. So it's going to take you a long time as a taxpayer to actually sort of, you know, balance out that math. And I think that's something that people need to keep in mind as you ask for an override. I was reminded that just because you don't have kids that go to Hingham Public Schools doesn't mean that you don't support the override. But you have to be very aware of the fact of what you're asking people to pay for. Because you have been pulling that money out of that system for, for quite a while. So it takes a little while to balance things out. And so when you talk about the work that it's going to take to get an override done, you have to have coffees, you have to, you know, have people write to the paper. You have to, we, you know, we organize this town by voting precinct. I mean, it's a lot of, it's not just, it was a different world back in 2009. We didn't have social media, really. We think we had, you know, emails. That had all just begun, but it's, it's not just, it's conversations, but it's actually identifying who your supporters are and making sure that they go to town meeting and making sure that they actually vote. Town meeting usually goes okay, but the privacy of the ballot box when someone has been unemployed or whatever they're facing due to the pandemic, and they know that their taxes are going to be increased by, I don't know, pick a number, $1,000 a year. To some people, no problem, I'll get a lot for that $1,000 a year. But to other people, they're going to have to move out of town. And so I just think you have to talk about these things, sort of understanding everyone's needs and sort of keeping that in, in the back of your mind as you try to balance everything. And I think this town does a phenomenal job of, of educating its students. You know, it's, Hingham was known for its education and I know there's a huge frustration there. I had three boys that all graduated from Hingham High School. They all did quite well. They all went to foster school. They never had a, a, a window in their classroom. But they never really, they never, it never really bothered them because they were, they felt so involved in the community. And I just, if anyone is interested in, you know, sort of hearing about my experience, I'm, I'm happy to help. I don't know if the Friends of Hingham Public Schools has been resurrected, but that was always the vehicle to get things done. And it was also, you want to make sure that you don't pit, you know, town departments against each other to get this done because you really need everybody's, everybody's buy-in or it's just not going to work. And I thank everyone for doing the hard work that they're doing because it's, volunteering in this town is a full-time position and I thank you.
Thank you. I recognize Paul Healy.
Thank you, Mary. My perspective is a little bit different. I grew up in this town. I'm the oldest of seven. I'm married to a woman who's one of seven. We all went to the public schools. I have five children. They all went to the public schools. I felt that we got a good education. My children are grown and gone. I had grandchildren in the public schools. And I'm very satisfied with the education that they received in my capacity as a selectman. I was very sensitive to the tax burden on the community. But having been a beneficiary of a public education in the town of Hingham, I was very appreciative of that. But that having been said, at least one comment I heard tonight was very troubling. I frankly view that any override has to have accompanying it a compelling argument. I thought Christine Smith laid that out pretty clear. So to the extent that that's the direction that's collectively decided, the argument needs to be compelling. And as a selectman, I felt that my fiduciary duty to the town of Hingham was to the town of Hingham. And that included people who were hanging on by a thread. And any kind of property tax increase would result in them being compelled to move. And that was kind of my guide on when I was making financial decisions in my capacity as a selectman. So I don't envy the conversation and the decision that's ultimately reached here. But I have full confidence in the Board of Selectmen being able to arrive at the right conclusion. And I hope the school committee joins them as well. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I think I don't see any more hands. You know, we, we talked earlier about in a community of 23,000 people where people experiencing them in different ways. People have various priorities. People have various economic circumstances. Our collective challenge is to find a balance that is responsive to people's desire for services, the need for infrastructure, combined with maintaining the economic diversity that is within our town. And, and really, you know, it's, it's finding that, that right balance that's important. You know, in terms of your Board of Selectmen, one of the reasons that we wanted to have this conversation tonight is that whether or not we agree or disagree with it, this is a significant decision for this community. So it's very important that, that this process be socialized and that people be aware of the conversations that are getting, taking place so that they can participate. That's a little bit more challenging in a COVID environment because there are, it's just a little bit harder to be connected. But as we move forward, that is a, that's, that's a priority for the town. Again, in terms of our next steps after the, you know, in the new year, both the school committee and the Board of Selectmen and the advisory committee will be holding budget hearings. This is going to give us a chance to kick the tires on budget requests, both kind of the level services as well as the, you know, the, the immediate needs. Towards the end of, of January, as the revenue picture starts to get a little clearer, you know, then, then we sort of make a comparison. And, you know, we're going to have to see where we are. How do, how do revenues and expenses match up? And what are our options? I'm going to take one final comment because I saw a hand, it disappeared, it came back. Ms. Laron, I hope I pronounced your name correctly.
Yes, good evening. This is Mina Laron, 2 Winfield Road. And again, just to reiterate what everyone else has said, thank you for all of the volunteers that are working so hard. Just a couple of quick points, and I've attended a lot of these meetings. So I'm just trying to streamline my thoughts a little bit here. You know, these are unprecedented times. This is a pandemic and I realize the challenges with that. But I think it's important to highlight that so many industries across the state, across the country have figured out ways to stay committed to the purpose and our goal, which is to keep our town afloat and to get our kids back into school. So while I realize these are challenging times, we're nine months into this. And I can tell you as a frontline worker in an ICU in Boston, and I've worked through the pandemic this entire time, you can figure it out. We can all figure out ways to stay connected and to stay committed despite being in a pandemic. It's possible and we need to stay committed to that. Secondly, the other thing I've heard a lot in a lot of these meetings is the commitment to data, whether it's through Dr. Austin's data that he's collecting or data that needs to be obtained through the budget. And I would implore our town officials to really stick to looking at the data about transmission within schools as well as community metrics that help us decide what is best for return to school and other community services. So again, I applaud all you're doing. As a parent, as a committed citizen of this town and someone who has tried to stay well-informed throughout this whole process, I really do feel like transparency works best for all of us. And so as transparent as all of you can be in your thought process, whether it's return to school dates, classroom sizes or budget would really be helpful to all of us, specifically the parents that are really, really struggling right now.
Thank you. And I would just note for people who are on the call, both, both Selectman Ramsey and I have children currently enrolled in the Hingham Public School System. We're kind of bookends. Bill's children are at foster school and I have a senior at Hingham High School. So we, we, we are, along with everybody else, trying to help ensure that our children are being educated in these very challenging times. At this point, the, the Board of Selectmen, actually, we have a little bit more business that we need to take care of. Certainly, members of the public are welcome to stay for that. But at this point, I think I would invite Bob Curley and Carrie Nie, if you, if you'd like to, to adjourn your respective committees. And I believe that you need a roll call vote. So I might ask members of the school committee and advisory committee to unmute. So Bob, do you want to lead off?
Yes, I'd entertain a motion to adjourn the advisory committee meeting.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second.
And I will call people's names as they appear on my screen. Victor Baltier.
Aye.
George Dennis.
Aye.
Andrew McElany.
Aye.
Dave Anderson.
Aye.
Ellen McDonald.
Aye.
Kevin Sheen.
Aye.
Nancy McDonald.
Aye.
Abilene Cooper.
Aye.
Julie Straley.
Aye.
Brenda Black.
Aye.
Tina Sherwood.
Aye.
Kristen Zikowski.
Aye.
Erin Kelly.
Aye.
Did I miss anybody? I think that's a 13, zero and one absent vote. Thank you all and season's greetings and Happy New Year.
Happy holidays.
Happy New Year, Bob.
Same to you.
Carrie, would you like to adjourn your committee?
Yes, thank you very much. I'll take a motion to adjourn. Thanks, Carlos, second.
Second.
Thanks, Michelle. And we'll go alphabetically, Michelle Air.
Aye.
Jen Benham. Sorry, I can't hear. Ness Currenti.
Aye.
Carlos De Silva.
Aye.
Libby Loicki. Libby, you have to unmute yourself.
All right, I was working on the minute. Aye.
Liza Riley.
Aye.
And I'm Anai as well. Thank you, everyone.
Good night.
Good night.
Merry Christmas, Happy New Year, everyone.
Okay, the next item of business on our agenda, we have a, a couple of possible appointments. Bill and Joe bear with me, I'm just grabbing my vote list. Would, uh, we have a potential appointment for a special police officer? Would someone like to make that appointment?
Happy to make the appointment. Before I make the call, I want to note that the person we are reappointing Charlie Southard was a longtime police officer, is one of the nicest guys you're ever going to meet. So I would make a motion to reappoint Charles Southard as a special police officer for a term ending June 30th, 2021.
I'll second that motion. I've spoken to Chief Jones and I enthusiastically second this motion.
Okay, any further discussion? All those in favor, Joe?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
Okay, I would like to make a motion to appoint Daniel McGonigal to the Development and Industrial Commission to fill an unexpired term ending June 30th, 2025.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, Joe?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
And we have another potential appointment to the Energy Action Committee. If, if anybody wanted to put a name forward?
I would move to appoint Mark LaBelle to the Energy Action Committee to fill an unexpired term ending June 30, 2022.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, Joe?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
And I think we had one final vote, which was the Common Victular Licenses.
I would make a motion to review the annual Common Victular License, Licenses as presented.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, Joe?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
Thank you. Next item of business is a public comment on items not on the agenda. The Board of Selectmen has set aside three minutes for individuals who wish to make a comment. We ask that those be directed to the chair and that they be respectful and not indulgent personalities. This is not the time for the Board of Selectmen to engage in discussion. But if anyone has a comment on an item not on the agenda, you may seek to be recognized. Okay, seeing none, town administrator reports. Michelle?
Nothing, thanks, Mary.
No, well, thank you, Mary. I just wanted to call, shout out the DPW for their work during the storm. It was, it was, they did a great job as always.
Thank you. Joe?
This, this meeting, we not, we did not do a, an update on the MBTA actions with respect to the ferry in Green Bush Line. And just to inform members of the public that we are still actively seeking to restore whatever service was diminished. We are thankful that the Hingham Hull Ferry was not eliminated. And we are seeking to restore the reduced levels of service on the Green Bush Line. But we are thankful that that has not been eliminated. And with that, I just wish everyone a happy holiday season. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, Bill?
Want to wish everybody happy holidays. See you in 2021.
You know, just close, this is actually the last Board of Selected meeting for this year. And I, I just, I was thinking at the beginning of this meeting about everything that's happened this year. And, you know, I would start out and mention that, that the board started the year with Karen Johnson, who just did a wonderful job for the town. And while we were very sad to see Carol, to see Karen leave the board, we were delighted that Bill ran for office. And Bill, it's been a real pleasure to work with you over the last six months. You know, as a board and, and with Tom and Michelle's help, I just want to mention a couple of the things that we've done this year. Because in any other community, you know, you would do one of these things and it would be the highlight of the community. And the bottom line is, we've done them all. And, and this is a partial list. And Tom and Michelle are probably going to tell me that I forgot like a thousand other things. But our AAA bond rating was reaffirmed by all three rating agencies, which was a pretty heavy lift by the finance team. We bought a water company and we assimilated a water company. And water is still coming out of our taps and it has been a very successful transition. We bought the Benjamin Lincoln House and took an important asset that is going to be part of our community for a very long time. We saved the ferry. We held two town meetings during a pandemic. And we interviewed 75 of our fellow citizens and appointed a And we interviewed 75 of our fellow citizens and appointed about 50 of them to different positions. We secured $2.3 million in CARES funding for the town, which was a Herculean effort. And, and lastly, and most importantly, during a pandemic, we as a community very, very quickly pivoted to um, running our town government and operating our schools during circumstances that none of us could ever be prepared for. We're not staffed, nor should we be staffed for an event like what we're experiencing. But through the dedication and very hard work of so many, so many people, um, we as a town are making it through this. Um, has it uncovered some things that we need to focus on? Absolutely. Um, but I am so proud to be part of this team and to stand with, with my colleagues and to stand with our dedicated town employees um, in, in making our way through these very extraordinary times. Um, if I have one regret, it is, it is the personal toll that, that this has all taken on all of us. And that's on citizens and volunteers and staff alike. Um, it is my sincere hope that with the turning of the page to the new year with the vaccine, um, that we as, as individuals, as members of our family, as members of our community, as professionals, are going to turn the page and we can continue to move forward. Um, as, as Paul Healy likes to remind us all, um, and he's not on the call anymore, this town's been around for almost 400 years. And it is, it is a credit to uh, to everybody that Hingham is weathering through these very difficult times. Uh, so on, on behalf of the board, we thank all of our employees. We thank our fellow volunteers. We thank the citizens of Hingham for the privilege and the opportunity to serve. Um, for those who are celebrating this week, we wish you a Merry Christmas. For everyone, we wish a Happy New Year. And uh, we will look forward to seeing you on uh, Tuesday. What is it, Tom, the 5th? January 5th?
Yes.
The first, the first Tuesday in January. So uh, with that, thank you very much to everyone and happy holidays. I, I take a motion to adjourn.
No move.
Second.
All those in favor, Joe?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
Good night, everybody.